And welcome. Before we commence formally, the CEO would like to give you some advice.
Good evening, councillors, staff, members of the public. Just to advise everyone that from this evening, we will be live broadcasting the council meeting through council's webpage. This will exclude presentations from members of the public with the exception of our presentation from the Audit Office. It will also, of course, exclude confidential matters when council chooses to go into confidence. So can I just ask councillors and staff if you are speaking, when you speak, can you please turn your microphone on and then turn it off when you have finished speaking as it's required to be legible through the broadcast? Thank you and good evening.
Thank you very much. Our first item would be the Prayer of Council, which will be read by Pastor Samantha Bulmer from the Lightgate Church. Could you please be upstanding? That will be followed by the National Anthem.
We would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Carbrigil Clan and the Darug Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was assessed by peoples of the Darula and Darug Nations. The affirmation of council: We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all Liverpool residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with the good government in Liverpool. Now, let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for all who are gathered here tonight. We pray for wisdom and guidance for our leaders as they discuss and make decisions. We also pray for your blessing over this meeting and over the residents of Liverpool. In Jesus' name, amen.
Australians, oh, let us rejoice, for we are young and free. We've gold and silver and wealth for to, our home is girt by sea. Our land abounds in nature's lips of beauty rich and rare. In history's page, let every stage advance Australia fair. In joyful strains, then let us sing, advance Australia fair. Beneath our radiant southern cross, meant all with hearts and hands. To make this commonwealth of ours renowned of all the names. For those who come across the seas, we've boundless place to share. With courage, let us all combine to advance Australia fair. In joyful strains, then let us sing, advance Australia fair. Thank you, everybody. If you could be seated. Do we have any apologies? No apologies. Condolences? Confirmation of minutes?
Move that way.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? I'll put it, those favoured, those against, declare it carried. Declarations of interest?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. In relation to item COM 01, on page 97, I am an ordinary member of the City of Liverpool and District Historical Society, hold no offices. Technically, that's not even a conflict, but as in the past, I declare it anyway and I'll leave the chamber when that item comes up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same.
Same.
So that, wait a minute. So councillor Rhodes, are you leaving the chamber or staying in the chamber?
There is no pecuniary interest at all. I think that if we've still got a quorum, I'll leave the chamber.
Okay, thank you. And was there another same?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I too will leave the chamber when COM 01 comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Likewise.
Okay. Still got a quorum, guys. Okay, thank you. Any other declarations of interest? Councillor Rhodes, could you turn off your microphone, please? Thank you. Public forum. Our first item is Miss Lee Brunet. She wishes to address council on planning proposal RZ92015, Middleton Grangetown Centre. A formal motion to bring forward Corp 3.
I move that.
Thank you, councillor.
Corp 3 be brought forward.
Thank you. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Ms Larissa Chan, who's the Director of Financial and Audit Service, and Mr Ferkhan Youssef, who's an Audit Manager from the Audit Office of New South Wales, who will address council on our financial reports.
Good evening, mayors and councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Larissa Chan and this is Ferkhan Youssef from the New South Wales Audit Office. We're pleased to be here for the third year auditing the financial statements of this council. For the rest of the sector, this is the second year that the Audit Office will be signing the audit opinions of all councils in New South Wales. Our role at the Audit Office is to provide independent assurance over the council's financial statements, to provide you with greater confidence in council's financial data. This is particularly important for a growth council like Liverpool, which houses Sydney's third CBD, entering into a number of capital projects, as well as some really exciting initiatives, such as the Western Sydney City Deal. We've now completed our audits of the 1718 financial statements, and I'm pleased to inform you that we will be issuing a clean audit opinion. This means that the financial statements are presented fairly and comply with Australian accounting standards and the Local Government Code. Council maintained proper accounting records and were able to provide sufficient evidence for our audits. This is a fantastic result, and I'd like to thank Keeson, the CEO, her directors Chris, Vishwa and the finance team for continuing to work with us throughout the audit. Liverpool council exceeded the Office of Local Government benchmarks for five out of the seven indicators, and improved on most ratios compared to the previous year. This demonstrates that the council is in a good financial position. Ferkhan will walk us through the conduct report later in the presentation, which includes the details of council's financial performance. Before we get to that, I'd like to mention that the Audit General produces a local government report to Parliament every year. This report consolidates the results of 138 councils across New South Wales and shares sector-wide insights around financial reporting, performance, asset management, governance and IT. This is a useful publication for councillors to refer to, to understand the opportunities and the challenges that councils are facing from a financial perspective. The Audit General also released a data visualisation tool, which is available on our website, and it can be used to benchmark council's performance against other councils. Our mandate also extends to performance audits, and earlier this year, we tabled three performance audit reports. The first one was on council reporting on service delivery. We also tabled another report on fraud controls in local governments, and also on shared services in local government. The first three performance audits were focused on the sector as a whole, but going forward, the performance audits will be targeted more on specific councils. There are three scheduled performance audits planned between now and 30 June 19, and these are on waste management, managing staff implications for amalgamated councils, as well as the management of developer applications. Post-30 June 19, we'll be looking at asset management and local governments, as well as cross-border issues for local councils, and rural water and sewage fees and charges. These reports will be made available on the Audit Office website. Ferkhan will now step us through the report on the conduct of the audit, which details council's financial performance.
Thank you, Larissa. Good evening, councillors. Through you, Miss Mayor, I will briefly talk about the financial performance of the council for the year ended 30 June 2018. As Larissa mentioned, we will be issuing a clean audit opinion on the financial statements. Along with our audit report, we will also issue a report on the conduct of the audit. This report includes commentary on the council's income statement, liquidity position and the performance ratios. This report accompanies the audited financial statements and is issued under section 417 of the Local Government Act 1993. My next few slides will briefly present the information that will be included in that signed report. This slide actually compares the actual operating performance results of 2017 and 18 with the previous year. Council's revenue, as we can see from rates and annual charges, and grants and contributions have increased over the two-year period. This has resultantally improved the council's operating result before and after capital amounts. My next slide basically explains or outlines the main reasons for the increases in the key revenue streams of the council. The main reason for the increase in rates and annual charges revenue is the rate pegging increase that was approved by IPAD, that was about 1.5%. As we all know, that Liverpool City Council is a growth council, therefore the increase in the number of ratable properties has also contributed to the increase in, to the additional growth in rates revenue. Another significant factor was the increase in annual charges for domestic waste management services that contributed to the increase in rates revenue. I'll stay here. So having spoken about the grants and contributions revenue, so the main reason for the increase in grants and contributions revenue is the additional transport grant funding that was received during the year. As mentioned before, due to the council being a high-growth council, and due to the number of new developments happening in the Liverpool area, the revenue from contributions levied on the developers have also increased compared to the previous year. Council's net operating result was a surplus of 117 million, which exceeded the budgeted surplus of 73 million. My next slide represents the net cash flow movement. Council's operating cash flows have increased during 2017 and 18. Main reasons, as discussed before, were the increase in revenue from rates, annual charges, grants and contributions. Council has been consistently investing in the infrastructure assets, which is evident from the cash outflows reported in the investing activities. This slide illustrates the council's cash and investment balance at 30 June 2018 compared with the previous year. Council's cash assets are categorised actually into three groups. First group carries external restrictions, which are imposed by the legislation such as Local Government Act 1993. Without the approval of the Minister for Local Government, these funds cannot be used for any purposes other than the purpose for which they were collected for. Next group is, carries internal restrictions. These restrictions are placed by the council itself. These restrictions are placed by the council itself, generally through a council resolution. These funds can all, cannot be used for other purposes, but with a council approval. The remaining funds are unrestricted and available for council's day-to-day operations. As we can see, the total cash and investment balance has increased significantly, and again, the main reasons are the same that we have spoken about before, the revenue that was collected from rates, annual charges, grants and contributions. The Office of Local Government has prescribed a number of performance ratios that measure council's performance during the year. The Office of Local Government has also prescribed a minimum benchmark for each ratio. This slide provides a snapshot of seven ratios with the prescribed benchmark and council's performance. As we can see, Liverpool City Council has achieved five of these seven ratios. Council did not meet the benchmark for the own source operating revenue ratio. Since it's a growth council, it receives a significant non-cash contributions from the developer that has resulted in this outcome. Building and infrastructure renewal ratio is not an audited performance measure. This assesses, this ratio assesses whether the council is renewing the assets in the same, in the same rate as it is depreciating them. It's a long-term performance measure, and council has been consistently reporting a result around 90% over the past three years. I will hand it back to Larissa to finish the presentation. We will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So I guess the journey of auditing councils has been both challenging and rewarding, but the opportunities to make a difference for this sector are immense. As we complete our audits of all councils, we're starting to see some key themes, particularly around asset management and the valuation of infrastructure assets and the accuracy of asset registers. Governance and internal controls around financial accounting, purchases and the processing of payroll is another key theme, as is information technology. Councils hold a lot of sensitive data, so it's important there are adequate controls to ensure the data is secure. We'll highlight our observations and our insights in our next report to Parliament, which is scheduled to table in March 2019. This will highlight better practice and share learnings across councils. We'll also continue to work with the Office of Local Government to improve guidance for councils. Thank you again for allowing Furkan and myself the opportunity to present at the council meeting. We're happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions councillors? Councillor Haggerty?
Yeah, can I first congratulate both the Audit Office and council staff on their hard work. I guess there's a lot of detail in the presentation, a lot of detail in what you said, there's even more detail in the, in the papers, I guess, for the tens of thousands of people watching on the streaming online, and for the people in the, in the audience. In terms of, you spoke about benchmarking with the Audit General's visualisation tool. I guess how do we compare to other councils in the metropolitan area? And, you know, I guess probably the most reasonable figure would be like in terms of our operating result. Are we, are we above, are we below, are we sort of middle of the pack? How are we, how are we going there?
I think the council is in a good financial position. I guess if you look at all the ratios, you're meeting five out of seven of them, and your operating performance ratio is positive. So if you benchmark to other councils in the metropolitan area, it's a good result. Yep.
Thank you. Councillor Chitty?
Actually, I've got some questions for the CFO, if that's appropriate at this stage.
Yes, I'm happy for Ms Nadan to take questions.
He's got them on notice, so this shouldn't be too painful, hopefully. In relation to, and I'm referring to the addendum booklet, page 13. Can you please explain the cash and cash equivalents going from 47 to 104 million? So the top of the page there, please. Page 13. Cash and cash equivalents, current assets, jumps from 47-odd million in 17 to 104 million in 18.
Through the CEO. Sorry, again, through the CEO, the cash and cash equivalent positions increased. There were about $14 million of grants that we got last minute, that's unspent, that's, that's included in the closing balance, 30th of June 2018. We had about $57 million worth of developer contributions coming in, that's, that's actually adding to the result.
All right, next one, on page 15. Halfway through cash flows from investing activities. Sale of investments goes from 49 million to 90, almost 92 million. Page 15, halfway through cash flows from investing activities receipts. Page 15 of the addendum booklet.
Page 15, okay. So... If you take out the $59 million from there, which is the purchase of infrastructure, property plan and equipment, you basically left with about $20 million difference, and that's, so this basically looks at how much we have invested, and how much of the investment have actually matured. It's not an expenditure, it was a movement in cash.
Page 27, and I suppose I can answer this question, but the fines parking goes from 3.3 million to 3.8 million. So we've booked or collected another half a million dollars because people can't see a no-stopping sign?
This is based on 60% of the infringements issued during the year.
Then page 40, sorry. Three-quarters of the way down, street lighting, there's a significant increase, decrease of 400,000, which is obviously great news, in the cost of street lighting. What do you attribute that to?
What has triggered this?
Sorry?
The question is...
What, what do you attribute the decrease in 400, given that we're building more roads and more lights are going on, yet we've decreased our street lighting cost by 400,000?
I believe there's been an initiative where we've been installing some energy-efficient lightings in there, which has actually contributed to the results.
That Wesrock one, was it?
Sorry?
The Wesrock one?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I'm being smart there, obviously everyone. Then on page 45, sorry. In the unrestricted reserves, and this is either to the auditor or the CFO, $48 million, which is, you know, only gone down a couple of hundred thousand. Is it fair to say that if I chose tonight, I could move a motion to build something and use that $48 million?
Through the CEO. It depends on what council wants to do and how the cash flow pans out depending on the future plans of the council.
Let's say a swimming pool at Carnes Hill, an aquatic centre at Carnes Hill, for example. Could I use it for that? Or can council use that for, for that purpose?
I don't have an easy answer for that, but I guess what we need to do is to look at what, what the council wants to do and, and how it stacks up with the fit for, fit for future results.
So councillor, just to expand on the answer to that question, the, the finances are unrestricted, but the impact on council's broader financial position would have to be taken into consideration.
Have you finished councillor Chitty?
I have a question related to councillor Chitty's question. Just back to page 27 with the parking fines. Do we have a breakdown on where those fines were issued? And is it possible that a larger majority of that increase was due to a lack of parking at Edmondson Park Station provided by the state government?
Councillor? I would have to take that question on notice and the other part of it as a comment.
Thank you councillor.
Sorry, who's the state member at Carnes Hill? Sorry, at Middleton Range?
Yeah, Middleton Range.
Sorry, Edmondson Park, one of your lot, isn't it?
Thank you. Enough, enough. Any other questions councillors?
I move a motion as it's entered in the book, thank you.
Thank you councillor Shogun, common sense prevails.
May I can we just include?
By councillor Haggerty.
With the indulgence of the movement, second, they just include a line in there thanking the Audit Office as part of the, the actual motion?
Yeah, happy to agree, yes, thank you.
Thank you councillor Chitty. So with that extra item, going to put it, those in favour, those against, carried, thank you very, very much for your hard work. Moving back into the normal agenda, the next item on the agenda is EGRO 01, and the recommendation's on page 63.
Madam Mayor, I'd like this item moved to the confidential section of the matter to be heard with the first item in legal affairs, and so that it can be heard in open discussion.
You can move that, be moved into confidential, seconded by councillor Hall. Is there any objection?
Can I ask a question as to why?
Yes, it's on page 63, the, it's the draft Liverpool Environment Plan 2008 Amendment 66. Councillor has asked a question, councillor Rhodes, is there a particular reason?
Yes, madam mayor, there is a number of references to that particular development in the legal affairs, and I would just feel that it would be better handled by council if we could hear and speak about it openly, in open discussion, in relation to the legal matters that are outstanding on that.
I've just got to take some advice. Are you moving to confidential for particular legal grounds? And I, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, but just bear with us a sec. We'll take some advice.
Councillor, and through the CEO, the legal matters in the legal affairs report that are referenced in relation to this site, council's not actively involved in any of those matters. They're matters in which council has filed what's called a submitting appearance, which means we're basically a bystander watching two other parties fight it out. I'm happy to address issues or questions you may have in relation to those matters, but, but they have no bearing or, or, or connection to EGRO 01.
I just asked, just for clarification for the council, is there any legal basis that we can actually deal with this in closed session?
Not that I'm immediately aware of.
Okay, thank you. So I have to rule that we can't go in, we can't, it's not a law formation councillor, on the advice of our legal person, so the matter is still before the council.
Thank you.
Sorry councillor.
In that case, I have a question madam.
Yes councillor.
The report references objections received by Transport for New South Wales, the RFS, the OEH and the SES in relation to the number of proposed dwellings and the lack of emergency evacuation access. So I was just wondering how the proposed amendment relates to these objections, whether it deals with them, or whether that's dealt with in the separate development application?
Mr Moore, I'll ask you to address those questions.
Sorry, excuse me, taking it through the CEO. Those objections are proposed to be dealt with after the gateway determination would be issued. This is a recommendation to you to proceed toward gateway determination, and those matters would be evaluated at that subsequent stage.
I have a little bit of a difficulty in understanding that answer, madam mayor.
Rhodes, you have to be acknowledged by the chair, sorry. Go ahead please.
I have a little bit of difficulty understanding that explanation in line of that it's the current DA that was refused by Gateway under those conditions. And by changing the rezoning to boundary, this whole development is going to be resubmitted. Is that correct?
Through the CEO, no, no, that's not quite correct. There isn't a development application involved in the matter, matter before you tonight, it's a planning proposal. Previously, there have been development applications, and there has been legal proceedings in relation to those. And there was an earlier planning proposal as well, which included two parts, if you like, which is shown on the drawing on page 64. A change to the zoning in the yellow and red hatched area, and a change to the green-red outlined area. That planning proposal received a gateway determination, but that gateway determination has now lapsed. And there were legal proceedings around that planning proposal as well. But that gateway determination has lapsed. The proponent in this situation has chosen to proceed with just part of that proposal, just the area in the red and yellow hatched. So the proposal before you tonight is just for the red and yellow hatched area, and it is a proposal to change that zoning from the RE2 zoning that it has currently, to the R3 zoning, which is the zoning for the land immediately to the north. What is described in the report as a boundary adjustment, to take the, the boundary of the R3 zone and extend it down across that red and yellow hatched area.
Thank you councillor. You still have your light on? Do you wish to raise another question?
Yes, it is another question, if you may permit me. Just on that matter, the motion that is at hand, that you are asking councillors to vote on, part one is the motion about the little slithery bit of land that you're saying that is being added to the boundary. Part two of the motion is asking the CEO not only to resubmit the gateway, the councillor approves zoning boundary readjustment, but also seek revised gateway determination. That revised gateway determination, is that to revise the determination that was previously ruled as not acceptable by Gateway?
It's through the CEO. No, the revised gateway determination is to revise the earlier gateway determination, which applied to two areas, the yellow and red hatched area and the green area, so that it only applies to the red and yellow hatched area. The gateway determination, or the government, didn't make any subsequent ruling in relation to that earlier gateway determination, it's just that it had a shelf life on it, and that shelf life has lapsed. But what did happen along the way during the life of that gateway determination is there were legal proceedings in relation to it. So a court made a ruling on that gateway determination, but the, but the, but the government didn't, didn't revise that gateway determination at all. It's just that that determination has lapsed, and so the proponent in this case is choosing to proceed with just a part of the earlier proposal, that being the smaller area that you identified in, in the yellow and red hatching. There is a separate planning proposal, which the council were briefed on around about 12 months ago, I believe, for the, for the larger part of land, which is shown green and, and red, with the red outline, but that hasn't come before council yet, other than in that briefing around about 12 months ago. It will, before too long, come to council as well. So I suppose, in simple terms, the earlier proposal that was being, that was before council, that did have a gateway determination, is now being done in two parts, and tonight you're just being asked to consider one part of that.
Yes councillor Chitty?
Given the council's seen this before, we deferred it, the acting director gave us a briefing session where lots of questions were asked, I'm happy to move the recommendation on page 63.
Thank you. Got a second, do?
Me.
Thank you. Who was me?
Nathan, councillor Haggerty.
Councillor me, councillor Haggerty. Yes, anybody wish to speak for it? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? I'm going to put it, those in favour, now, this, you've got to have yourselves counted on this one, so those in favour? Those against? Can I say unanimous? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Next items on page 71.
Move a motion, mayor.
Thank you councillor Chitty.
The council develop an events plan for the 2019 Christmas period in the CBD and Carnes Hill, which includes lighting.
Seconded, councillor Haggerty.
It's wonderful when everybody comes together. Okay.
Can I have some clarification of that motion, please?
Would the speaker like to speak to his motion?
Firstly, thanks to staff, I think the CEO mentioned at the last meeting that it's nearly impossible to get this back to us in such a short timeframe, and you made it happen, so to your staff, thank you for that. In relation to what's this about, we were pushing to have something happen this year. The report says, listen, you're taking some risks, not risks, but some of the lights there, maybe we should think about it, and I think we should think about... And I think we should think about it and if we plan it correctly for two thousand and nineteen, it's not just a matter of putting some lights up on trees and hoping that people realise that there's some, you know, lights on trees during the Christmas period. Let's put the lights around the area, on the trees or wherever it is, but then develop an events programme as well in the lead up to Christmas, so that we celebrate the Christmas period with these lights, people come together, eat, drink, be merry. Um, and we actually get a better outcome if we plan this right.
Thank you. We have a speaker against?
I'd like to speak for the motion.
Uh, hold on a moment councillor, councillor Hagerty?
I just have some questions.
Yes, we'll ask you questions.
I'll ask my questions. Um, uh, the expense, uh, that's given there, uh, the longer we have them up, you know, is it sort of, you know, if it's one month, seventy thousand, is two months, a hundred and forty? What's, you know, or, or does the, is there, I guess, increasing at a decreasing rate, the cost? Where I'm going with this is that if we kicked off our events, uh, in October-ish and kicked it off with Divali and went all the way into Christmas, New Year, uh, perhaps that might be a, a good way to get things going. I just want to know what the cost implications are.
Uh, councillor, my understanding is that the majority of the cost is for the installation and once they're up, it's, it's electricity and, and some maintenance. Um, so it's really a sliding scale, your big expense is getting them up there, not keeping them up there longer. So we can certainly look at that costing and bring that back to council in part of the scope for a potentially dip, Riley, that could be gorgeous, and Christmas event.
Thank you councillor Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, uh, really grateful that, uh, a motion has been put up that makes more sense. And, uh, it's in light of the fact that when this motion was first put to the council papers, which I did, uh, the intention of the lights being in a commercially operating centre of the CBD was intentional in its purpose to encourage much-needed economic stimulation. In the commercial centre of CBD, Westfield will be at its busiest at this time of the year, where thousands upon thousands of people will be doing their Christmas shopping. The light display, perhaps even in Macquarie Street, uh, had the greatest opportunity of attracting already existing audience simply by this chosen, uh, location. The purpose of this location was to encourage some of the people already in Liverpool out of Westfields and into the mall and Macquarie Street to increase the economy of Liverpool. The installation in this location was to maximise the possible audience that would have the opportunity of seeing Liverpool in a new and exciting way. By moving the location out of Big Park, which I was never in favour of, uh, council was losing the original purpose intended by this motion and reduced the exercise that it was seemed, or could be seemed by many, that it was just a matter of seeing if our council was capable of putting up lights and taking them down. Um, there could be, have been some residents, uh, who would have questioned the sensibility of council's decision to move the location of the light display to, uh, so that, uh, less people would see it and, uh, would have a very minimum commercial impact certainly than that, than being in the, the Liverpool CBD. Residents could have thought that, uh, council was spending seventy thousand dollars of their money with no more intentional purpose than the exercise of putting the Christmas decorations on homes for the sole benefits of a few birds who live in Big Park. So I'm very pleased to support this motion because it is common sense of the original intention of the motion when I first put it to council. Thank you.
Thank you councillors, any opposition? I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, the carried, carried. Next item is on page seventy-seven.
Got a question, if I may, mayor?
Yes, certainly.
To the relevant, what stops us from renaming the new Denham Court Road into Founders and leaving the old Denham Court Road as Denham Court Road?
Mr Moore, are you able to answer that?
Through the CEO, I'll have a go. Uh, the, uh, 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 the ge- geographic naming board is the, is the short answer to your question, that's what would stop us from doing that because that road already, um, yeah, has taken on that name, I guess they both have taken on that name. I'm not sure that's a question we've put to the GNB to sort of flip around the, the, uh, the, the names, if you like. Um, it may not, uh, be as logical because that portion of Denham Court Road extends a lot further. Um, so you'd be naming, you know, a, a larger length of road for, for a lot further. There are certainly other naming options that were put to GNB, such as, you know, the names you see like Old Denham Court Road, which wasn't allowed and Denham Court Lane and things like that, to try and keep a bit of, uh, uh, consistency. Um, but, uh, uh, look, I'm not sure we've put that question to, to, uh, the GNB. Uh, we could potentially do that, but I think it may, uh, open up, uh, a number of other issues for us.
Thank you. Um, any, councillor Rhodes? Thank you councillor Hagerty.
Uh, just for my benefit, I, I read the bit about, you know, they don't like to call things old this, west that, north that. Why do we have North Liverpool Road and South Liverpool, like, is that sort of, is that a new convention and those roads were named prior to that convention coming in?
I think you've found some history. Councillor Caliander?
I was just going to move the motion as per the book.
Thank you, seconded, councillor Hall. Any objections? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried. Next item's on page eighty-one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Sheldon, seconded?
I have a very quick question before you.
Okay, just let me see if I can get a second up.
I will second.
Oh, okay, thank you. What is your question?
Um, there's, um, I'm, I'm very, very pleased to see that there's a really comprehensive section on, um, wayfinding and signage. Um, I was just wondering what mechanism exists to ensure that we are working with or interacting with neighbouring local government areas, um, to see if we need to put signage on their land, that sort of thing?
Um, councillor, I might take that one on notice and come back to you if that's okay. I don't want to give you a, a proper response, not an off-the-cuff response.
I've got one quickly.
One minute, councillor Chitty, councillor Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a number of questions as well.
Yes, go ahead.
What, what I'm worried about all these bike paths is, does council have, uh, statistics on how many bike owners there are currently in the Liverpool LGA? Has council considered the aging population in Australia and their ability to ride bikes? Has council got statistics on the current average age of cyclists in the Liverpool LGA? Has council got statistics on how people are using their bikes? Has council got statistics on how many people are using their bikes for recreation at weekend, transportation to work? Has council got statistics on how far kilometres people in Liverpool currently ride on their bikes to get to work as an alternative means of transport? How many days of the week, year, in the year, do bike riders currently use their bikes? These questions bother me. I don't know whether we're spending a lot of money for very little use. And the answer to these questions would give me more confidence to support this motion.
Um, councillor, that's an extensive range of questions, which I am going to have to take on notice. Um, information to some of those is things that council simply doesn't hold. Others has to be extrapolated from the ABS, so I'm unable to, to answer those questions, um, in this particular forum.
Thank you councillor Chitty, your turn?
Nah, yeah, big now.
Um, in, in the light of that, sorry.
I'm chairing this meeting, not you councillor.
I was actually trying to be nice for once in my life.
Your turn.
Um, the report talks about the Cartrite BMX, um, track and we're looking at options. How soon can we get some options for that?
Uh, we've already, councillor, we've already been in discussion with, um, Westminster Parklands as well as scoping out potential areas around the LGA. I'll commit to coming back to you early in the new year with some proposals there, yep.
Thank you, mayor, you can take over now.
Thank you councillor Hagerty.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions we can add to the long list of questions from councillor Rhodes. Um, how does Liverpool rate in terms of, uh, the age of its LGA compared to the rest of the country? So I think there was a comment about the aging population. And my second one is, can we get a bit of information around research on, uh, building bike paths and providing, uh, you know, end-of-stop facilities and change rooms and all that? Does, is there any research around, does it actually encourage people to cycle? Does that actually increase the numbers of, of cyclists? So if you build it, will they come?
Um, again councillor, I'll, I'll have to take those questions on notice. Statistically, as you know, we skew both younger and slightly older in the ABS statistics, but I'll get the proper data for, for the councillors. Um, in relation to end-of-trip facilities, um, I can get you some, uh, up-to-date research that indicates that, yes, uh, up to, uh, end-of-trip facilities do encourage cycling.
Councillor Rhodes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, in light of the fact that, uh, there are a number of questions surrounding this issue, I would, uh, like to put a foreshadow motion. Uh, the motion would be that this motion be deferred until council can provide the answers and the evidence in the questions asked.
Thank you, do you have a second up?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Blute. Okay. Do you wish to speak to your motion councillor?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's not that I'm against bike paths. I just feel that there is so much that has to be done in the Liverpool LGA. There are places in Liverpool that do not have footpaths at all. And I would just feel more confident, Madam Mayor, if we had these particular questions answered. I would like to support the foot, uh, the, uh, bike riding facilities for Liverpool. But I do believe that it's, um, not going to be proven by the statistics that there is an actual need. And yes councillor, there, it may be proven that these facilities do encourage more people to ride their bikes. But I just wonder how far people are willing to ride their bikes to work. And if we were to, uh, map that and see how many people then would be affected by these bike paths and whether the bike paths are going to service that, all these questions have to be answered. I just feel that we're doing all this without proper planning, without proper knowledge, without proper understanding. So I just would feel far more confident voting for this motion, once all these questions have been answered.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Sheldon, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Only to say this, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, I'm particularly happy to see in the report that the question of connections in relation to a lot of the bike paths in the area is being dealt with.
Thank you. Any speakers against the motion? Any speakers against the foreshadowed motion?
Yeah, I'll kick off with that one, mayor. In relation to this, and I totally support councillor Shelton's motion and not the other one that's there. Councillors, remember, I think it was in February of this year, so now we're in October. This came to us and we had a lengthy discussion. Eight months later, I think the same questions were asked. Eight months ago, had one have really been concerned and wanted to know a little bit more, should have delved a little bit further and got the answers, not wait for February. It goes out from March to May on exhibition. And now, eight months later, we're going back to where we were in February of this year. It's been out on exhibition, councillors have had eight months to ask questions as part of the exhibition period and as part of the discussions back in February. I fully support the plan and will be supporting councillor Shelton on this one.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Caliander?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, one aspect of this is the actual, um, strategy and the benefit for the people of Liverpool in, in terms of having a bike path strategy. But having recently been to, um, a series of meetings with, um, with large companies in Japan, with the CEO and councillor Rhodes, um, when I mentioned the fact that we had a bike strategy entrained to people at these companies, that was something that they were incredibly excited by. And we know that very recently, two very large Japanese companies decided that they were going to set up base or invest in Liverpool. Um, strategies like these are really attractive to show that Liverpool is on the move, that we are a city that's progressing. And I think that just delaying this will, um, will hamper that process. So I will also, um, encourage councillors to support councillor Shelton and my motion, um, in pushing this ahead.
Thank you. Any speakers against any of the motions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes councillor Hall?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I've raised this issue several times before. Uh, while I don't have any objections to bicycle paths as such, I think we should be progressing with that. My problem is that the joint funding from the RMS to those bicycle paths, right, it's based on that the RMS will give us fifty percent, providing we provide the other fifty percent. What that means, in quite a lot of our areas, we do not have footpaths at all. That means young mothers pushing prams have to push them on the road and that really isn't satisfactory. So in my humble opinion, the first priority ought to be that we put footpaths where they're needed before we put in bicycle paths. And I might, I might add, that was on Liverpool distance and the surveys that you did, those were some of the comments that came back from quite a number of people who responded to that survey.
Thank you. We've had a speaker for and we've had speakers against. Councillor Hagerty is speaking against the motion.
I have a question.
Yes, what is it?
Is it possible to build footpaths and bike paths at the same time? Does council have the resources to be able to eat?
They do.
Eat, chew gum and?
They do.
Walk at the same time?
Yeah, coun- councillor, yes, we do. Um, it also, the, the, uh, strategy itself looks at shared paths where it's possible to create shared paths and does not propose any additional funding to that which has already been allocated through our regular budget process.
Councillor Sheldon, do you want to write a reply?
Question?
Yes.
Well, Madam Mayor, can I ask the motion be put, please?
Seconded.
Question got in just before you, but I will most certainly take your motion as soon as the question is answered.
Just in response to, question to the CEO, to footpaths and whatnot, does anything stop any councillor from ever putting a motion to council to build more footpaths?
No councillor, council can put any motion to council.
There's a formal motion, the motion be put, it's been moved by councillor Didd and seconded by councillor...
I'll second.
Thank you, Caliander. Motion will be put, so the motion on page eighty-one is to be put at this point. Those in favour? It's deemed passed, becomes the motion, the foreshadowed motion. Hey? Yeah, all right, those in favour of the motion, please stand. Those against, please stand. The motion has been passed and the foreshadowed motion has latched. Okay, and we had to have our names recorded for that one anyway, guys, so, just so you know. You just stood up to do it, so there you go. Um, the next item on the agenda is on page eighty-seven.
Can I move a motion?
What is your motion councillor?
Uh, as the book, but on point number two, where it says being the October meeting.
Yep.
Being the March two thousand and nineteen meeting.
Sorry? Oh, okay.
So eighty-seven?
Yep.
Yep, exactly everything, but at point two?
Yep.
Uh, hold one council meeting two thousand and nineteen in the rural forum, the rural area, instead of October, March, and I'll explain why in a sec.
Can I also ask with your indulgence, we move the twenty-fourth of April to the fourteenth of April? The council meeting? Well, the seven days before the twenty-fourth, whatever, seventeenth, I can't add up, sorry. Glad the auditor's gone. Okay, all right, seventeenth of the fourth. Yeah, all right. Thank you councillor. So you wish to move that motion and explain?
Just in relation to moving the rural forum, uh, for those that went out, uh, last week, councillor Hagerty, councillor Hall and councillor...
Rhodes.
Sorry. Um, obviously there was a lot of interesting things that are happening out there and hopefully by about March, we should start getting some responses to the Lurup. Um, so it's probably a, a, an ideal time to be holding a meeting out there.
Okay.
I'll make it easy, seconded.
Thank you councillor, just seconding that.
Just a comment slash question, uh, if I read it correctly, twenty-eighth of November, this facility i- is, uh, being used by another organisation. So we've got to ta- change the date of, of the twenty-eighth meeting or we've got to change the location of the twenty-eighth meeting. So happy for suggestions.
You talking about October?
October, is that what I said? Yeah.
Um, councillor, we can negotiate with the organisation who is using this room. And if, if we need to find an alternative, I'll find an alternative for you, even if it's Kusula Powerhouse or another alternative.
I'll, I'll make it easier if you like, so the twenty-eighth we're talking about?
Yes.
Uh, that we discuss it and probably don't want it as part of the motion. Um, but over at Middleton Grange, in the, uh, Thomas Hassel School, where we had the last forum, would be a great location.
Please remember councillors, we are now streaming these meetings.
And I have a question about that, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor Rhodes, you want your question?
When we do do the, uh, council meetings in the rural area and, uh, Middleton Grange apparently, um, will, will we be webcasting from those, those particular locations?
Thank you councillor, I prepared that one earlier. Yes, we are. Yes, we are able to webcast from those particular locations. It may not be of quite the same standard, but the staff assure me it can be done.
Okay, somebody will be holding their Apple phone on a stick. Okay, any other comments? You think I'm joking? Okay, I'm going to put the motion, those in favour, those against, the cleric carry. Thank you. The next item's on page 91.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Second.
I would like to put a...
Seconded.
Second to councillor Didd, thank you, councillor Didd. Go ahead, councillor Hagerty.
As per the book, but I'd like to add that council come back with a report detailing basically the headline figures, A, the number of code of conduct complaints and the cost of those code of conduct complaints. Let's pick a random number, for the last five years. So I just want to see a trend there. Is there a trend developing? Are we being more well behaved? Are we saving ratepayers money? If that's the case, I think that's a good news story that we need to tell.
Councillor Sheldon, are you happy to have that adopted into your motion and councillor Didd?
I'm happy.
Yep, you're happy? Thank you. Thank you this time. Okay, thank you. All right, is there any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carry. Next item's on page 97. Now, is this the one everybody put their hands up and said they're leaving? So I will take a moment so you can.
Happy to move the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Didd, seconded. I'll second. Thank you very much, councillor Ayar. Any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Could someone go and rescue our councillors and bring them back into the fold? The next item is on page 117.
Can I move a motion, Mayor?
Yes, certainly, councillor.
The council notes its ongoing support and membership of Wesrock.
Happy to second it.
Any discussion?
Just quickly, Mayor, I can't let this opportunity go, being part of that organisation for eight years. When we first came to council in 08, and it was councillor Napolitano at the time, myself, with the representatives, we went to this Wesrock meeting, and quite quickly it changed from just being about Parramatta and Penrith. And, you know, Liverpool then started coming into the discussions. It's an organisation that's grown and grown and grown. Yes, at times, there's been some rocky roads, just like all organisations. But what we've seen from the organisation, and I asked a question earlier purposely, things like the $400,000 savings as part of the street lighting programme, not to mention how much in carbon emissions that that will save. Other things at Wesrock, and it's not noted in this report, that we're involved in and where it has saved council a lot of money, the Western Sydney EIS review and, you know, collectively grabbing all the councils in Western Sydney to respond as Western Sydney, not just as individual councils. The Western Sydney Investment Attraction Office, although not directly from Wesrock, the discussion for that, which is now opening up in Liverpool... Oh, it's open now? Great. Was part of the discussions that were initiated in, you know, I think it was in 2015, between Wesrock that started it, Committee for Sydney, Western Sydney Union, New South Wales Business Chamber. And it was a GWSE investment perspective that we, perspective, sorry, that we actually put together for that. The Syrian refugee settlement, where we actually got, you know, it was just going to be fearful than Liverpool on their own. We were able to get together, you know, a round table with all the right stakeholders and hopefully there's a better outcome. Although there's some things mentioned in there in relation to the rebates that's actually mentioned in there, I suppose it's on a scale, if council was to go on its own, I don't think we'll get the level of rebates that you would if you're purchasing 80-odd million dollars through Wesrock. It is a good organisation. We've had a lot of representatives from that, and I think council should show its continued support.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, I'd like to speak on the motion as well, Madam Mayor. I'd like to support this motion and perhaps just to give a little bit more facts to councillor Hachiti's discussion there. A lot of the funding is not available to council because the funding that Wesrock is engaged in is only available to regional funding bodies. And that is one good reason why we should remain with Wesrock. There have been so many great achievements out of this body. If we go back to the light years ahead, as councillor Hachiti mentioned, there has been 2.4 million saved for Liverpool specifically, with a rate of return, rate of return on investment of $3.40 for every dollar spent by council. These are wonderful achievements. 2,639 tonnes of greenhouse gas emissions were saved for Liverpool specifically. That's just one of the things that they do. Turn down the heat, that's a new... Well, not new, they did this last year, they're going to be continuing with it. They're going to be announcing the programme in December. And turning down the heat is something that the state government has high on their agenda. And Wesrock was one of the leaders in putting this onto that agenda. These are the things that Wesrock does. Wesrock brought together 11 Western Sydney councillors, councillors, councils to commission the only technical review of the Western Sydney Airport draft environmental impact statement. There are so many things, we could go on for such a long time just to talk about the things that Wesrock does, that people don't stop to take the time to really consider. Other campaigns, and I think the CEO would agree with me from the last meeting at Wesrock, there were some fabulous campaigns that we should become more engaged with. But ones that we have been engaged with before was roadside litter campaign. And it was through that that Liverpool council, we nominated Hoxton Park Road as the site to be addressed under this programme, which saw an average of roadside litter reduction of 36% and a 58% increase in community members registering to report litter to the EPA. These are results that we need, and these are results that can be delivered through Wesrock. I could go on forever, but I totally support councillor Hachiti's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition?
No, I would, oh, is there any opposition?
No. Thank you, councillor Hagerty.
Thank you. Look, as the person who put up the original motion asking for a cost-benefit analysis, I'd probably, you know, I'd probably need to speak on why that was the case. Is it 85,000, around the 80,000 dollar mark? If we're spending that kind of money each year for an organisation, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure we're getting value for money. This report's come back. We quite clearly are getting value for money, and for that reason, I'm happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Given there's no opposition and people have spoken, I think I'm going to put the motion, those in favour, those against, the cleric carry. Next item's on page 162.
Seconded, Madam.
Thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carry. The next item we dealt with, and the next item's on 174.
Move that way, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shelton. Get a second, though. Councillor Didd, thank you. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carry. Next item is on 176.
I move that this item be pushed to confidential.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any opposition?
Do we need to state a reason, Mayor?
Well, there's commercial and confidence information within the proposal, and I think that would make, that would meet the criteria. There it is. Yep, sorry. Thank you. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carry. It will go into... Confidential. Next item's committee meetings, committee reports.
I want to pull a couple of these out, so we'll do them one by one.
Okay.
Move committee 01.
Second to 01.
Hold on, I'm writing as fast as I can. Okay, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Next one's intermodal.
I have an amendment as per, for the... So as per the book, just with the 2A, record any complaints received relating to the intermodal development, blah, blah, blah. Are we able to, I guess there are privacy issues, I guess more of a question, but are we able to publish details around those complaints? Maybe if we just have a ticker to say we've had X number of complaints?
I've actually lost my privacy officer because his report went through, but yes, we would not be able to publish the names. They would have to be redacted. But the content of the complaints, there's no privacy issues related to that, I don't believe, Mr White? Unless they're identifying.
Through you, CEO. If you don't mind, I wouldn't mind taking that one on notice because my one concern is the question of fairness and due process. So publishing a complaint perhaps after it's been determined to be valid or, you know, genuine, perhaps. But publishing complaints that are unverified and haven't been investigated, maybe not. So maybe if we could take on notice?
So fairness and due process for the intermodal? Interesting. Well, what if I added as D, investigate the possibility of publishing details of complaints online?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any opposition?
Can we just see what they're doing here?
Investigate the possibility of publishing complaints received online? Okay, false online? Back again? Okay, any opposition?
So just a question, that last sentence that was added, it implies that we only publish the complaints that are received online? Is the intention to publish the totality of complaints that we've received online?
I think the intention is that we have the ability to publish the complaints online, but we've got to check out to see legally whether we can.
No matter the method through which we've received them, even if it's, yeah, that's to answer your question.
It's not the complaints we've received online or by pigeon.
I realise I was being a bit nitpicky with my grammar.
That's okay. Councillor Rhodes, did you wish to speak? Thank you. Any further comments? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Next item is the Environmental Advisory Committee. Thank you, councillor Hagerty, seconded. Councillor Hall, any discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the cleric carried. Traffic committee?
Number of questions?
Okay. Councillor Hagerty?
All right. Item seven, but, no, the other bus one, item five. Riley Street, Liverpool, proposed removal of an existing bus stop. My understanding is that came to the traffic committee based on an inquiry from one councillor. The minutes and details of the report say that the committee spoke to the bus service, a private bus service who, you know, have a profit motive, no problem with that. But it's in their best interest to make as little stops as possible. Has any consultation been done with people who catch that bus as to whether they want to get rid of that bus stop or not?
Mr Moore, are you able to speak to that?
Through the CEO. You're correct that it was brought to the committee via a councillor on behalf of a resident with the view that the bus stops were too close together, and they are closer together than they typically are. But in answer to your question, I don't believe there's been consultation with those who use that bus route in relation to that change.
Because I know, the reason I raise that is, I think they got rid of a couple of bus stops around the Orange Grove part of the world. And when they did that, I'm sure they consulted with the private bus company. The minute they were removed, there were, you know, a number of complaints from residents. So I just want to make sure we don't fall into the same trap there. It notes that we, I think we're potentially going to move the, get rid of the middle one and move the other two closer together. Is that what, am I understanding that correctly? All right. Well, all right, let me think about it.
Okay, well, could I suggest maybe that you put in there that the community be consulted about the change? And then that would sort of fix up the issue?
Yeah, so as per the book, but we defer item five until consultation with people on the bus.
Wheels go round and round.
They do go round and round.
Yes, councillor Rhodes?
I've still got a few questions.
Hold on a minute, councillor. Yes, councillor Rhodes?
Just on that particular matter, councillor Hagerty. I attend the traffic meeting committees, and it was actually the bus company that I believe that put up that motion for the reasons that are stipulated in the report. So you should read that carefully. They're not doing it to inconvenience the people on the bus. They're doing it for safety reasons and other such issues.
That's fine.
I won't respond.
No, that's very wise. Okay, at this point, item five's been deferred until there's community consultation. Is there any other items you...
Yes, I have one item.
Hold on, councillor Hagerty was going to...
This one's not in here, but is a previous item that was brought to us via the traffic committee. It was the turn on Cupbert Avenue at Denham Court. Remember that came up about three, four months ago? You go around the corner and there was a request to put, right. So initially, council staff put up some plastic reflectors, which mysteriously went missing. Council debated that motion and we decided that we were, I think councillor Hachiti were involved in this as well. We decided that we're going to put up metal reflectors with steel poles. Now, this is going to come as a shock to people, but the day after they were put in, someone mysteriously got an angle grinder out and has chopped those down. So two questions there. Can we look into that? And two, to legal counsel, I guess, is there the ability to prosecute someone, you know, on civil grounds? I think there's a reasonable, we could make a reasonable case as to who may have chopped those down, given the location of those reflectors?
The answer is yes and yes.
So there you go. Councillor, I'm going to give councillor Rhodes call.
You finished?
I said he is, so yes, it's your turn.
All right. My question and concern is about the special item on the agenda concerning the proposed name change. Now, when we were at this meeting, it did give people, not concern, but they laughed. They laughed because by changing the name in the way proposed, not only is it going to take up all of our pages here in our ordinary meeting minutes, just to get the name in, but we would have to change the name every time there is a new vehicular or some other method of transportation to include it in the title. I don't think that it's really necessary for us to define all the means of transportation, be it pedestrian transportation or bike transportation or bus transportation, in the title of this committee. I think local traffic committee says it all. And I'm only putting this up because I know the laughter that this particular motion caused at the committee meeting. So I would propose that we leave the name of the existing name just being the local traffic committee.
Councillor, I'm aware that the traffic committee is not a committee that's ours. We don't own it. If the name change is coming from the state government or whoever the parent of this committee is, we could probably say to them, could we retain that name, you know, within our own realm, inverted commas? But we don't have that control. But given your passion, I think we could probably write to them and ask that it be retained. retained.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Just a question.
Yes councillor Hagerty?
Are we going to base motions of council based on the amount of laughter they emit? Or...
I think I'd rather laughter than other things, but let's just move on. Okay, I'm going...
Name it, age 220, item Liverpool City Centre.
220...
We're talking about the medical centres pick-up no-stopping set down that we discussed previously.
Yep.
And we said send that particular item to the traffic committee and let them discuss it. They've discussed no parking. But they haven't discussed that one. Now, if I read correctly the LTC notes of what can and can't happen, as long as we send something to the traffic committee, once the report comes back to council, we can then do whatever we like with it, is that correct? That's my understanding of the charter and the guideline.
Councillor, I don't have a copy of the charter on me.
Can you take my word on that one?
Yeah.
Madam CEO?
Well, it's a matter for councillors to take your word on it.
All right, well, I'll move the original then, and this is the no-stopping outside the medical centre. Could I move the original recommendation as a foreshadowed in the, in the book? And that council immediately remove, so as a point three, the no-stopping sign located, and I forgot the number. On Macquarie Street outside the medical centre in the top half, in between Macquarie and the Old Knox. Sorry, I did have the number and I just... It's no parking. So we can remove that. The, again, the issue with it is the position it's located. I understand that there needs to be something there for the medical centres and if we move that, okay, it's going to be a little bit of an inconvenience, 15 or 20 metres up the road or 15 and 20 metres down the road. What's happening at the moment, there's a no parking sign in the middle of parking. So people aren't realising that it's actually no stopping, they see a spot there, there's about three other signs there and people are getting confused. And the rangers are doing their job, they're booking people. And as we saw the finances earlier, I think we've collected another $600 odd thousand and it's, you know, maybe all of it's from there. We don't know, but it's just unfair in the actual location for people that aren't noticing it. I'm happy to take up the option where you paint the road red and put other signs to, to make it clearer, but at the moment, unfortunately, people are getting booked. And I think the only solution that I can find at the moment or see at the moment is if we remove it and move it either 15 metres up the road or 15 metres down the road.
Councillor, can I just ask a question? Are you trying to make that a drop-off pickup point or a parking area?
A standard parking area and move your drop-off pickup where it doesn't coincide with parking either side.
You want a contiguous line of parking?
Yes, and then just move that one up or down, whatever you choose.
Madam mayor, do I have to put in a foreshadow motion to move the motion as per the book?
No, we've got that. Councillor Hagerty has moved, we haven't got a second as yet, in regards to, but what I was hoping in the, you know, willingness of calm, that we have to get a second of councillor Hagerty's motion, that he take on board councillor Chitty's concerns.
No, 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 no. Mine totally different is...
You don't want to accept the minutes of the report?
Yeah, yeah, but he's talking about bus stop talking.
You don't want to deal with that?
No, no.
Oh, okay. All right, fair enough. Who's going to second councillor Hagerty's?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Caliander. Okay councillor, let's look at councillor, hold on a moment councillors, I'll just get this sorted. Councillor Chitty's moved a motion. Who's happy to second that?
Well, just a question regarding item five, madam mayor, if I can?
Yep.
If the traffic committee with no objections move the bus stop to be removed, open a request from the bus stop, why are we going to community consultation? If all, 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 all the party involved, okay, has no objection. If I have a company and I want to remove like some of my stuff, so what are you going to do with me? Well, just a questions.
The bus company receives substantial amount of funding from the state government to provide a public transport system and the bus stops are always done in conjunction with the actual bus companies and the public in general. In this particular situation, we've heard that there are apparently bus stops that are too close together or whatever. What councillor Hagerty's asking is that the item five be deferred until there's some genuine community consultation about people using that bus route because there is some history in the past, history and past go together, it's tautology, I apologise, that we have removed bus stops for various reasons and then residents have been left without a bus service or walking a lot further than they can do. So what he's doing in this is asking that item five be deferred. We can put it back...
We are not talking here about like a bus stop removed within 100 metres, we're talking about the three bus stops within 75 metres.
Well, we're asking that we consult and see if it's going to affect folk because there could be a couple of disabled folk that use that particular one. We don't know, we don't know, they may, they may not. The reality is it's been, we can take it back to the traffic committee and say that the council's asked to be deferred until there is some consultation about it. And that's basically all that is. Okay? Councillor Chitty is asking...
But I'll include councillor Hagerty's point.
Yours? All right.
Yeah, I just had that gets up.
Okay, so that, so we have the one motion, so councillor Hagerty, are you happy to second councillor Chitty's? No, he's just said he's... Oh. Okay, all right, well, okay, fine. No, he's happy with that, it's just the, he doesn't want to do the Denham Court one. All right, so we've got... Are you happy to take on board councillor Hagerty's motion or not councillor? Okay, all right, you got that bit in there. Councillor Hagerty has a seconded with councillor Caliander. Now councillor Chitty needs a seconder. He needs a friend. Councillor Deed? All right, councillor Deed is seconding, we have a seconder. So we have a motion and a foreshadowed motion? Okay. Now councillor Rhodes, did you say you had a foreshadowed motion?
Madam mayor, what do we have to do to just pass the items as per the book?
You just say, I would like to foreshadow another motion?
I'd like to foreshadow another motion.
That you'd like to just move what's in the book?
I'd like to move just what's in the book, thanks.
Okay, seconder, councillor Hall. So we have two foreshadowed motions and a motion, I think they're all pretty clear.
Sorry.
Yes councillor Hagerty?
I would like my part two as per the book. I like the new name.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. All right, so is the seconder of the motion happy with that? Thank you. All right, I'm going to put the motion as originally moved by councillor Hagerty and councillor Caliander, which includes community consultation and also the investigate who removed the signage at Denham Court. Those in favour? Those against? It's, it's failed. The next item is the first foreshadowed motion, which is moved by councillor Chitty. Those in favour? Those against? Failed. The next foreshadowed motion is councillor Rhodes. Okay, which one are you wanting to stand for, the second one?
All right, stood up, eh?
All right, okay, we're going to, those, the first motion is put by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Caliander, please stand if you support that motion. Those against? Okay, motion has failed, so we go to the first foreshadowed motion, which is moved by councillor, I'm losing my space here, councillor Chitty and seconded by councillor Heedie. Those in favour of that motion, please stand.
Sorry, madam mayor, can I clarify something?
That foreshadowed motion stands, the other foreshadowed motion lapses.
Funny when you...
Thank you. So much action in a committee. All right, next item is heritage advisory committee on page 224.
In relation to that one, madam mayor, I move the minutes as they appear in the book with one alteration.
Thank you, seconder.
Yeah, the one alteration was please show me as an attendee.
The minutes need to be amended that councillor Sheldon was in attendance.
I'm sure he was talking but not turning up.
Moved by councillor Shelton, seconded by councillor...
I have an additional motion for that.
The seconder for the minutes, thank you councillor Hall. Yes councillor, what is your issue?
There is a mention in there about the external historian to be engaged to deliver a report. So that a historical points of interest along the Georges River, located between Liverpool and the Georges River National Park be included in the draft heritage strategy with a medium term timeframe. I move that motion.
Well, that's part of the minutes, isn't it?
It's part of the minutes councillor.
It asked us to consider.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep, yep.
Because that has a financial implication.
Yep, it has a financial one. All right, moved by councillor Rhodes, seconded by...
Look, I'm happy to take that on board as part of the motion.
Okay. All right, any opposition?
What are we doing?
I could make a facetious comment, but I wish...
Part 3A, is that the one we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, what are we doing with that?
We are employing somebody to become the...
I, I foreshadow a motion as per the book and I remove point three.
Hold on a moment councillor, just hold your horses councillor. Yes CEO?
That particular point three would require the, an external historian to be employed on a consultant basis to develop that piece of work. So it has been flagged in the minutes because as, as the mayor, I believe, has identified, it does have a financial implication to council. I couldn't tell you what the exact cost would be because I don't have the scope of works in front of me, but you need to be aware that there is a cost implication.
Okay.
So I would like to foreshadow a motion.
Yes councillor.
As per the book.
Yep.
I get rid of three.
Right. Yep.
Add that councillor Shelton diligently attended the committee.
Yep.
And I'll replace, I'll, I'll change three to investigate whether historical points of interest are in that app that was built. There's an app with historical things in it, isn't there?
Yes, there is.
Right.
It's called Heritage Sydney councillor.
And for your information councillor, they're not included in that app.
Okay, then, then we investigate whether points of interest are in that app and come back to council with costings on how much it would cost to add such points to the app.
Yeah, can I say that particular app can be expanded?
Yeah.
And it was $5,000 per council at the time that it was launched and the staff of every council involved actually put the app together. So it was done out of the goodness and the, I think, the general commitment of staff. So yes, all right, seconder?
Sorry, Ben.
I've got a question.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on, seconder for councillor Hagerty's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Caliander. Yes councillor Rhodes, you had a question?
Yes, councillor Hagerty's change to the motion would still need to employ a historian to find those particular sites to put in the app. So I find his motion silly.
Point of order. I'm afraid I'll have to uphold that councillor.
When is being diligent and responsible with ratepayers money silly?
Thank you councillor, that will do. Councillor Rhodes, you will have to apologise, that is...
I apologise madam mayor, the point I was trying to make is that you're not saving council the money because you would need to engage with a historian to find those sites to put them in the app.
I want to know how much it costs before we do that.
Okay.
Could I ask a question mayor when you're...
Yes councillor.
We, we had a report earlier about Wesrock and the cost benefit of that, the Georges River combined committee thing that we sit on. Is this something that they've, don't we sit on a committee to do with the river?
The, the name of it's changed, Georges River Keeper, I think, I'm looking towards Sydney and Peter Hall. I don't think their remit includes historical analysis, it's about preservation of the current waterway. However, I'm happy to put the question to them.
Now that you mentioned waterway, how's that going, given that we're in that committee?
That's not a pro, that's not on the agenda, please move on. Now, we have two motions before us councillor, we have a second of a councillor Hagerty's motion, have we? Councillor Caliander, I think you, no you didn't?
But I also had a question.
Okay, what is your question?
Just in terms of the app, who is responsible for maintaining and expanding that app?
That's a good question that I'd like to take on notice, thank you councillor.
Well, I can tell you it's a joint effort, so I suspect that various bodies from each council has a bit of a responsibility. Madam mayor, if I may? Yes, yes councillor.
Councillor Hagerty, I think it'd be a good idea to actually put that in your motion that you'd like to know how much it costs because I'd like that too. Is that, is it, oh, yep, okay, perfect, sorry, I missed that part, thank you.
No worries. Okay, I'm going to put the motion as moved by councillor, I can't see, councillor Shelton and seconded by councillor Hall? I think, you know, no, yeah, all right. Those in favour? Those against? I declare that loss, uh, one, the loss, sorry, that motion lost. The next motion is the one as proposed by councillor Hagerty and seconded by councillor Caliander, those in favour? I declare that one, that's the motion. Okay, the next item is on page 232.
Yes, quick question before we move, if you, if I can councillor, sorry. In some of the, okay, we'll just use page 33 for example. Pending further information, pending further information, pending further information, and it goes on the next page as well. Yet the ones that are not considered or it says no supporting, no supporting, could they easily be transferred to pending further information?
Yes, I don't have the full details of all of them.
And I understand the ones that are not...
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's some.
Angela?
Through the CEO, it's my understanding that, that the ones that are pending require further information to meet the criteria, the ones that were declined didn't meet the criteria at all. For, for, for reasons that outlined. I could, I could get those of the particular ones that you...
Oh, sure madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Deed, seconding that motion.
I just have a question.
Yes councillor Rhodes?
Just a simple question. Why is this money given out after the events? Like I noticed all the events had been had and now you're giving out the grants for it, did I read that correctly? We're giving out the grant money after the events have been held.
Under this particular grants programme councillor, Miss Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, as they're all under $1,000, the delegation to actually provide the grants is, is delegated to me, so the grants have actually been released and this is the final endorsement by council as per the grants and sponsorship policy. The quick response grants are the same, they're under $1,000, it's delegated to myself too because they want to move them relatively quickly, the same with these sporting grants.
Thank you.
Just a comment, suggestion, question. I know with a couple of these, they were refused because people were representing places like Samoa and the Philippines. I guess there are some unique circumstances when it comes to sort of rugby-related sports in that, you know, there isn't really a, a team from Lebanon that competes in the World Cup, but there, there is, but I'm saying there is a Lebanese team that's predominantly, you know, full of Australians of Lebanese descent and I think that's the same here, there's a Filipino team which is probably full of Australian Filipinos and a Samoan team of Australian Filipinos. I guess... Is that something we can look into? Like I get the, yeah, that's outside the LGA, but, you know, they're, they're from our area, they're promoting the sport, it's almost like our own version of foreign aid, we're help fostering these sports abroad.
Councillor, the recommendations made are the ones that are currently consistent with the grants and sponsorship policy. I have no objection to taking this comment into consideration when we do the review of the policy and we can look at that and bring that back to council for your consideration. Yep.
Thank you. Any objections to this motion? I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried, we'll have a 10-minute recess. Meeting councillors. Please could you be reseated? The next item on the agenda is questions with notice, councillor Hagerty.
Yeah, thank you staff for uh those answers. Just some clarity on question one, it says here, um, the article was inaccurate. So just for my sake, are we saying that there was an article in the Telegraph that wasn't entirely truthful? Because I'm shocked if that's the case.
Um, I can only advise that the Department of Planning has advised us that the article in the Daily Telegraph was inaccurate. I can't speak to the accuracy of the article myself councillor.
Ma'am, just, just on that point, I'm happy to second councillor Hagerty's motion congratulating the government for their commitment to the funds because I'm sure he would have moved something opposite had that art- article have been accurate. Just for their commitment to.
Uh, it, it wasn't about the government, it was about the department. Um, I, I deliberately didn't score any political points here, it was about the Department of Planning and ensuring that Liverpool got all the funds it was entitled to for the sake of ratepayers.
Thank you councillor, so you're happy with the answers to your questions? Thank you. Next item is also you.
Uh, yeah, so I guess the reason I put this one up is that it's become clear to me that going out and finding a truck driver's not working. Um, count, uh truck drivers are making more than the fines and they just see it as a cost of doing business. Is there anything over and above we could do such as restricting the um, the weight of vehicles? Now again, that's just a sign, but if there is, let's say, a seven ton vehicle on a four and a half ton street, what recourse do we have? Is it just again another fine? If it is a fine, is it a larger fine? I'm just, do we have a bigger stick we can whack these guys with?
Mister White, can you speak to that? You might need to.
Through you CEO, not authoritatively. Uh, I am aware that uh under the road rules, um uh there are certain restrictions relating to GVM and parking in residential areas. Um, but, and yes, of course, we can put load limits on roads. Um, and of course, under the road rules, that would create um the capacity to uh issue pins. But whether the ability lies with council to issue those penalty infringement notices or whether with the police, that's one question I can't answer tonight. Um, if you don't mind, I'd like to take it on notice.
All right, well, I'll move a motion. Um, that council staff come back to council with a report on uh additional options to enforce, uh you know, trucks not parking where they should, you have to use some better words than those though.
I'll second that motion when you get those better words.
So the motion is that council um provides a report about what the legal options are for trucks or trucks and heavy vehicles.
Uh, on additional legal options, legal options, yeah, to enforce trucks not legally parked. Um, especially in residential areas.
Okay, it's been seconded. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is councillor Rhodes.
Yes madam mayor, and I thank the CEO for the answers to the question and I really appreciate the work that Liverpool coun- council is currently doing. Uh, and uh because this is a very, very important issue, the koalas are iconic to Australia and we stand on the very fringe of them becoming extinct. Um, but I refer that the notes in the reference is all about the Macarthur region and not enough is being done in the Liverpool LGA. And uh the koalas do not stop in the Macarthur region, the Macarthur region is getting more and more problems. Uh, only in the news today, there was the fact that uh another development has been approved, which is um they're going to be disturbing the habitat in that area. And when they do disturb the habitat in that area, they come into the Liverpool region. Now, um, I do have a motion that I would like to uh submit, madam mayor.
Yes, what is it?
Um, it's rather long, so I shall give you.
Have you given it to the typist?
Yes, I'll give it. The motion will read that council writes to the minister for roads, maritime and freight requesting variable message signs along Heathcote Road, Moorbank and Australians and Anzac avenues with, with wildlife crossing signs. And two, prepares a Liverpool council revised koala preservation plan as a matter of urgency that includes a report back to council by February two thousand and nineteen, if we can, that identifies costs to include and implement. A, preservation corridor route for koalas wildlife traversing through the Liverpool LGA along the Georges River from Campbelltown connecting to the Holsworthy Army Land and any known sub-colony areas in the Liverpool LGA with a four hundred and twenty-five metre river setback, a two hundred and fifty metre creek setback and a road hotspot for koala kill of four hundred and twenty-five metre corridor to be included in the LEP. And B, the planting of koala food trees along the corridor routes. And C, a wildlife fencing plan along Heathcote Road that includes a channeling fence directing wildlife below Dead Man's Creek Bridge, which is recognised as a koala kill hotspot. And D, wildlife crossings across the Georges River and identified road kill hotspots in the Liverpool LGA.
May I um, if councillor Rhodes is willing to accept, I have um uh some, some additional points or an amendment, depending on whether she's willing to accept it. Uh, that in addition to what's there, that council write to New South Wales Labour leader Luke Foley congratulating him on his announcement to establish a four hundred hectare koala national park in South West Sydney. I'll send it through. Uh, ensure that infrastructure in, uh, and for also ensuring that infrastructure and koala habitats are built with safeguards to protect local koala population, including wildlife overpasses, underpasses and fences along Heathcote Road. And for providing three million dollars to establish a koala care centre in South West Sydney. I'll email that through.
Are you, are you seconding, uh wait a minute, councillor Rhodes, are you happy to adopt that?
Um, was my motion seconded, madam mayor?
No, not yet.
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Blute.
Um, as to the mo- as to the motion uh amendment, uh I appreciate councillor Hagerty's um contribution. I would rather, and I know that both sides of, of, of politics has to work on this issue. It's a difficult one for me because I'd rather keep it not political. I'd rather um state what the things are that have to go into. I'd rather, um, state what the things are that have to go into the LEP. It's important that we address that issue. It's important that we plant koala food trees along the corridor. These are specific issues that council has to initiate and move forward with.
So councillor, you're saying you don't want to adopt that part into your motion?
I didn't get that far, Madam Mayor.
Well, hurry up.
As I said, I'm having a few moments to think about it. Uh, look, it doesn't do any harm. Uh, it is not the most significant of, of things that we have to do in the Liverpool LGA. We're talking about the Liverpool LGA.
Yep.
And that I don't see as being in the Liverpool LGA. But I'm quite willing to accept it being included in the motion if it's what takes to get this action done. That's it.
Is that a yes?
That's a yes.
Can I ask a question, may?
Hold on, second, are you happy to adopt that, given the move areas?
Yeah, happy with that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Chitty.
Ca- couple of things, and councillor Rhodes was talking about theirs, and I also love koalas, so... But we're talking about koalas that are moving between boundaries, so up Macarthur, Liverpool, anywhere the river is. I see it more, and just my own thoughts, more appropriate that we actually talk to the other councils to ensure that we can develop a whole plan to ensure that these koalas are safe. And then councillor Rhodes touched on it with that development at Campbelltown. For example, yes, there are reports today, um, in one of the, in one of the mainstream papers about that development in Campbelltown, which could threaten their habitat. What I would hate to see is us come up with something and a plan, and we're talking about 425 metres here and 250 metres here. I'm not sure, and I'm sure you've done your research, um, in relation to that. But where those numbers come from, I personally would like to see us maybe talk to the other council areas where this is, um, the koalas are, are, are running through. Um, and ensure that we can work together with them to ensure that there isn't then a boundary or a border. So if you're crossing over from Macarthur, um, into Liverpool, because it's going to be greater in Liverpool by the sounds of things than it is to Macarthur, so the law will be coming to us, um, that the koalas can actually go. In relation to, it's great that there's a 4,000 hectare koala national park in southwestern Sydney. Be- before we congratulate anyone, um, wha- what are the details in relation to that park? Where's the 4,000 hectares? Is it going to be, you know, Western Sydney Parklands? And then we just rebadge that to a koala habitat park? Is it going to be a brand new one? And I suppose the question we should be asking before we congratulate them is, is this a Labour Party commitment? Or is this, uh, the Honourable Luke Foley's commitment? Because as we know, leaders change and...
Point of order.
But I'm being seri- I'm being genuine here, may?
Hold on, it's called point of order.
All right, go.
Relevance.
Can I respond?
I'm thinking. Um, I think I'll uphold your point of order on the sense of relevance because councillor, you were talking about the expanse and also the, um, the general hectares and so on, and then diverted into making a comment about the leadership of a political party. So I'm going to uphold the point of order on that note. Could you please, I'm, I'm assuming you're speaking against the motion from your discussion because you've gone into a discussion and a debate. So you need to explain if you were speaking for or against, I'm assuming against from the way you're querying and questioning the nature of the motion.
May, just in relation to your ruling, um, I think I'm being very relevant. It mentions names in there, it mentions hectares in there.
Councillor, I have ruled, that's it, now move on with your debate.
What, what options do I have if I don't like your ruling, may?
You can move a dissent in my ruling.
One, two, three, four, nah. I ain't going to get up, says that point, didn't I?
Thank you councillor.
In, in, in relation to, and on a serious note, yes, we want to see something happen here. I'm not comfortable in supporting, um, motions. If we want to thank the Labour Party for their commitment and they want to do it, I'm more than happy to do that. Um, I'm not here to play red and blue, um, but I think it's important, um, that we get this right. We work with our fellow councils, uh, our neighbouring councils and produce the right product instead of just throwing numbers out there and thanking everybody and we haven't even done anything.
Madam Mayor, do I have a right of reply?
You have a right to speak to your motion.
Okay, um, in answer to your question, councillor Hachiti, those figures have come from the Wooland Dilly summit where I represented Liverpool council. They are the figures that are being given for council to endorse. They're not figures that have not been done, but has already been done in collaboration. So we're talking about the collaboration that now, I'm now presenting to Liverpool council that came from that particular summit. Um, you know, eh, the, the fact is, we have a thousand koalas in New South Wales, stretching from Wooland Dally, Campbelltown, Camden, Liverpool and Wollongong. DNA testing has found that the colony has developed from just 10 koalas. And, uh, that was after the fur trade ceased in 1927, where over eight million koalas were killed. You know, this, this sort of stuff will bring tears to your eyes. And I'm not going to elaborate on it or waste council's time. The point that I am making is that the, these things that I have put before council have come from the Wooland Dilly summit. They were the figures that were suggested by the Wooland Dilly summit where all councils attended. So it has been done in collaboration. In response to the arguments about councillor, uh, Hagerty's contribution to the motion, this was exactly the reason why I was reluctant to accept that particular amendment to the motion. I wonder if we can, if council, councillor, uh, Hagerty will accept? And if you can go down a little bit so that I can read what he... Um, i- if we could just say, perhaps to satisfy both parties, um, something general which would be more to the line of, um...
Sorry, just a point of it there, she says both parties. There's actually three parties sitting around this room tonight, so to satisfy three parties maybe?
Well, to satisfy all parties.
Thank you.
Thank you, to satisfy all parties that we can, we congratulate all efforts to... We congratulate all efforts to action, the protection of koalas in South West Sydney, which could include the establishment of a 4,000 hectare koala national park. Um, and, no, and I think that's sufficient because we've already mentioned the overpasses, we know what we've got to do in Liverpool. So we take out B and we, um, welcome all money to establish better koala care in South West Sydney. I know that it's broadening it, but it is not being specific and not causing angst. We don't need angst, we need us all to work together. So I really hope that you'll accept that councillor.
Councillor, it's your motion, you're amending your own motion. You've basically, um, agreed to taking the amendment as moved by councillor Hagerty, but now have withdrawn that, it's been restructured. You've got a second up with councillor Blute, I believe, yep. So it's your motion. Councillor, anybody wish to speak against this motion?
Now, can I ask a question? Can we just roll up?
Councillor Blute.
Oh, sorry.
Madam Mayor, through you, I'm happy with that changes or that, but politicising that matter, I think it should be bipartisan support, uh, for everyone else in that room.
Okay, thank you councillor Blute, councillor Chitty.
Can we, sorry, go down? In relation to, and I thank you for clarifying where those numbers come from. Have our planning, have we actually seen those numbers? Can they work? Do they work? I, I understand there was a summit, um, that these numbers came out of. But obviously, we do have council officers and whatnot, the need to review and revise them. Um, ha- have we looked at those numbers? Do they work? Don't they work?
Uh, Mr Auton, Mr Moore, I certainly haven't seen them. I don't believe they've been provided to council staff as of yet.
So this is a committee that we're supposed to be part of, yet it hasn't come to council and we've got something. And councillor Rhodes, I really do want to support your motion. But I think it's important upon us, before we start talking 325, 425s and everything else, um, that maybe the, um, the, the, the facts that came out of that summit is put to the officers and allow them to report back to us, given that we're going to be looking at that as part of the LEP. We've still got that some time. But in relation to the VMSs and a few other things, things that we can do, absolutely supportive. But before we commit to these things, I think it's important for our staff that obviously get paid to do their jobs, loo- look at those numbers and come back to us and then I'm more than happy to support you.
Thank you councillor Chitty. Could we?
Whoa, 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 whoa. Councillor Chitty, there's no formal motion stating your sentiments. My suggestion would be to formalise it as a foreshadowed motion.
I, if, if you don't mind me, uh, just initially, I was given councillor Rhodes the opportunity, given that she's raised it, to maybe go down that track. If not, well then I'm happy to move something.
Councillor Rhodes?
Let's have a look at, uh, number A and see what we can do to appease councillor Hachiti. Could it read that councillor considered the pres- a preservation corridor route for koala wide, well, or... That council consider, so just consider preservation corridor route? Just the word consider it before preservation route. Um, with the suggested... Um, with the suggested...
Setbacks and corridors.
Setbacks, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Of 425 metre river and 250 metre creeks as per the rest of the motion. So that way, we are investigating whether those figures will work in the Liverpool LGA and come up with some figures that will.
With regards to B, where you're actually saying plant trees?
Yep.
You want to have that consider as well or leave it?
No, let's, if we, if we...
Can we just put consider at the beginning of point two? Consider preparing A?
No.
Thank you councillor.
So you, you're suggesting, Madam Mayor, consider the planting of koala trees? How about investigate the cost?
Yes, that's a much better idea because a lot of things you're sugge- suggesting has...
Well, I think that was in the top part of the motion or it was supposed to be.
Because identifies the cost, but and implement.
And implement.
See, so...
And the same for the wildlife crossings.
So you get the money and then you plant them. So I think you have to take some care with the wording, um...
And then the, uh, B, uh, is consider the, uh, investigate the cost.
Yes, I think that's a much bit more responsible.
And implement, impli- impli- implementing?
Yep.
Of planting koala trees. So take out the word of. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor.
And number C should be done the same? Because there will be costs in that.
Might be wise to just ask council to respond with a report that details the costing of the implementation.
But Madam Mayor, we're about to do our LEP or a workshop on it. I want this to be considered whilst we're doing that.
Yep.
Do you want that in the minutes?
Um, I think it'd be wise, just so then there's a record.
Okay. Um, and for these matters to be considered at the, um, forthcoming workshop on the LEP.
Yep.
There could be point two.
Sorry.
Council consider the following things in the LEP, colon, A, B, C, D.
Yep. Mr Second, are you happy with these amendments?
Yep, it's pretty okay, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And prepares.
All right. Any other matters for this particular motion?
I would like to speak in favour.
Right.
Um, and I would like to speak in favour so I can clear up some, uh, points made earlier about the amendment that I added. The reason I specifically mentioned, uh, the Labour Party and Luke Foley is that is, that it is a commitment on the table. There's a specific commitment that's on the table. Uh, and what that does is it, it puts political pressure on other parties to, to, you know, back that commitment or exceed that commitment. So, um, I'm, I'm not playing political games with it. I think as we've seen here tonight, we have, uh, koala tri-partisanship. Uh, everyone's on board and, um, you know, I, I think this issue of koalas, you know, goes across all political boundaries. If koalas could vote, I suspect they'd be green voters, but that's speculation. So none of us would actually benefit from it.
They'd definitely be tree hunters.
I'm not going there. Um, uh, so yeah, it, it's not a, it wasn't a political point. It was merely to state the fact that someone has put something on the table. We need to thank them for that, congratulate them for that and use that as pressure to get other parties to do similar.
Okay, we've had speakers four, if we get any opposition? If you want your right of reply councillor Rhodes?
I'm happy and I thank the council for working with us for this motion, it's very important, thank you.
I'll put it...
Sorry, may, we've still got a report that are coming back in February, but we're considering it in the... I just want to clear that up. So do we still want to report or are we going to consider this in November? Because it's part of the LEP, so if we're going to discuss it's part of the LEP, we're not going to see, we don't want to report it, do we?
Yeah, but that's, that, these are LEP changes.
No, we will wait for the, um, the workshop.
Yeah, it's apparently, um, the CEO and the director are saying it, it's, can be done. So it's, it's possible to do both.
By February, by February, leave it in.
Yeah, leave it in.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare the koalas carried. Okay, next item's on page 248, in the name of councillor Ayed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just with this one, I've, um, I think I would need a little bit more information. So the initial question is what is council's policy regarding deferred commencement for drainage easements? And I also like to know what is council's policy regarding approved drainage easements and commencements? So ones that aren't deferred, if they're, you know, approved at the same time as a DA. Um, and the process, processes for both council property and private easements? And, um, how do easements affect the processing of DAs? Um, specifically, I mean, smaller DAs, not massive, you know, massive developments. Um, mainly just small scale, like R3 townhouses and duplexes, um, things like that. I've had a few people ask me about this and they've explained that their DAs are being put on hold because of an easement and that the process isn't moving along. So I just wanted to clarify, please. So really, I want any information really regarding easements and their relation to DAs and how they affect them, please.
The CEO said that there'll be a, um, answer in the November meeting.
I'm hap- happy to take that, those additional questions. If you could possibly dot point them for us, I'll refer them on to the relevant staff. Thank you councillor.
Thank you.
The next item is also in the name of councillor Ayed.
Yeah, I'm happy to wait until the next council meeting to see, uh, the policy regarding that, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is notice of motion, welcome to Liverpool and orientation in the name of councillor Caliander.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, basically, this comes from, um, speaking to several people who, um, are members of the, the Defence Force who had questions around, um, you know, what the services and amenities and facilities, um, that were available in the local area were. Um, and in further discussion with them, it, we, we found out that there wasn't a lot that was, a lot of information that was provided to them prior to them actually ending up, um, at the barracks in terms of the local area, um, what sort of facilities there were for their children, um, what they could do with their families, those sorts of things. Um, I think as a growing LGA that has significantly changed in the last 15 years, a lot of the information that they're getting is based on word of mouth from people that haven't been here in quite a long time. Uh, a comment that caught my attention was that Water Grove is colloquially referred to as Battle Grove because of, uh, perceptions about what the suburb is like and, um, and sort of some, some things to look out for, for, um, the personnel that end up moving there. So I think, um, part of the growth and part of the change in the LGM has to be accompanied by changing perceptions of people who are potential residents. And I think providing them with information just prior to them... And I think providing them with information just prior to them coming in so that they are rightfully informed about what's available in the area, what, where they're going to be living and what that's like is, is quite important. So um, I move, I'll move that motion as per the book.
I'm happy to second that, Mayor.
Councillor, thank you. Any opposition?
I'd like to discuss the motion.
In a positive way or a negative way?
It's in a positive way. It's just that, um.
Just checking.
Uh, it is in a positive way. I uh, agree with councillor uh, Caliander's intentions. I just wonder if we're being a little bit too narrow uh, by isolating the Defence Community Organisation. And if we could not broaden it as a welcome pack because we have a whole new, a whole new group of people that are moving into our area all the time. And I like what you're trying to do, but I would think that it would be better if we broadened it, develop an, perhaps an online orientation welcome pack with all the introductory information about services and amenities in the Liverpool L G A that could be sent directly to the Defence Department and other bodies if we can find them. Um, it's particularly, you know, the uh, the new development areas. And it could be a, a part of our social network programme. Um, and we could have a welcome page on our website. I would like councillor Caliander to consider that we should broaden it, not just isolate it to the Defence Community. Of course, they've got to be sent the information and everything, so. So the amendment that I would make, if it is agreeable to councillor Caliander, would be to develop an online orientation welcome pack with introductory information about services and amenities in the Liverpool L G A. And distribute such information to the Defence Community and all new development areas through social network programmes. And three, develop a welcome page to service all new residents in the Liverpool L G A on our website. Would that?
I could, could I propose a different amendment? Um, that we, as per councillor Caliander's one. But uh, we basically take that one as a twelve month trial and based on its success, we look at expanding that to new release areas. So we start small, get it right, see if it works and then we expand it, rather than sort of going big bang. So similar to yours, except for, you know, we, we use this particular community as, as our, our petri dish, so to speak.
Can I respond, Madam Mayor?
Yes, certainly councillor, through the chair.
Yes, um, thank you very much councillor Hagerty. Um, the work that we do for this will be the same amount of work. The only thing that you are isolating is just sending it to the Defence. It's a good idea. It will work in that we are engaging with new people that are moving into the area. We don't have to test it. It's a matter of just implementing it. And it's not going to save council anything by just isolating it to the, uh, to the military sector.
Can I respond to that?
Certainly councillor, through the chair.
Uh, it will cost more because you would assume that there'd be printed material involved and postage costs. Um, and the idea is that it's something we've never tried before. Uh, as brilliant and excellent as council staff are, I think even they would admit that they don't get everything right the first time. And this is an attempt for them to get everything right the first time, learn their lessons, uh, incorporate it into a larger rollout. Uh, and then expand it to the new release areas.
Can I respond?
Yes, seeing you're the mover, it would be a good idea at this point.
Can I have something to say after?
Wait a moment, let the mover have a bit of a, I think she's entitled at this point. Yes, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, look, I appreciate where councillor Rhodes is coming from and I, and I agree that um, there is some sort of information availability or, or something that needs to be um, a touch point for new residents that move into our area. Um, however, I do disagree that the information that's provided to, say, the military community um, is going to be the same as the information that's provided to all new residents that come into the Liverpool L G A. And that's because they, they are a community with quite specific needs. They are here for a specific period of time. Um, they may have specific needs in terms of their families, their partners, um, their own interests and that sort of thing. And working with the Defence Community Organisation is an attempt to actually more deeply understand what those needs are, what those gaps are in terms of that information that's being provided. From my discussions with um, the, the, with serving personnel, my understanding is that um, personnel are told around July where their next rotation is going to be in terms of what barracks or base that they're going to be at, that what they're going to be allocated to, and they have until uh, August or so to organise um, the logistics around transferring. So that provides us with quite a clear window of opportunity in terms of who and when to provide this, uh, to provide this information to. And that's not something that we have with the broader community that is moving into the Liverpool area. So I think um, whilst I, whilst I really agree with you that there needs to be orientation information provided to the, the community at large, I think that this information is a little bit more specific and needs to be um, established in, in consultation with the Defence Community Organisation. So for that reason, I, I think separating those two things is quite important. So um, I, I'm happy to add a fourth to look at um, developing a welcome page on the website because I think that's quite a good idea.
Um, Madam Mayor, then I move mine as a foreshadow motion.
Okay, thank you. We've got a second of a councillor Rhodes's motion, councillor Hall, thank you. So we have the motion as moved by councillor Caliander and seconded by councillor Hagerty. As in the book with you, are you having that addition councillor?
Yes.
Yes, that we develop a website welcome page. Um, councillor Hachiti?
I was just going to say, Mayor, and maybe another uh, foreshadowed. Maybe we just look at concentrating on communicating with our current residents uh, before we start getting excited about everything else. We're out, and I'm in all seriousness here, we're out at the Rural Forum the, the other week um, in relation to the Lurup and communication and the delivery services out there. It's great and I think it's important that we look at all these mechanisms, but we've got a community out in the rural area that are crying out, saying communicate with us. And unfortunately, we're not getting it right at the moment. We have been trying and there's been a lot of great work. Maybe we just look at communicating with our current residents before we look at communicating, you know, putting all these other new programmes in place. So looks like both your motions could possibly go down if we vote against both of them and then we're going to do nothing.
Councillor, you're putting up a foreshadowed motion then? Okay, fair enough.
Madam Mayor, in light of that, I'd like to put up a foreshadowed if that's okay.
Yes, councillor, what is your foreshadowed motion?
Develop an online orientation. In English and also in languages most spoken in Liverpool. I mean, according to where migrants come from, the top three, yeah. Maybe just a, an audio of facilities available, events, where to go, where your local fire station is, where your local police station is, um, school catchment areas, play groups, et cetera. Um, and just on councillor Caliander's comment made earlier, I used to live in Hallsworthy and a lot of my neighbours were actually um, had partners who were in the army. And their needs were quite similar to everyone else's. I don't see how their needs would be different when they're living in the Liverpool L G A. You mentioned earlier that their needs could be different. Yeah, I would like a response if that's okay with Mayor.
Through the chair, please. Thank you. Councillor Caliander?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, my comments were on the basis of discussions I've had with, with serving personnel and they're related to the fact that they are on a quite specific timeline in terms of their, their posting and therefore um, whilst there, there is a significant overlap in their, in their needs as with the, the broader community, there are some specific things that any orientation guide or pack will need to cater for. And that's what I'm suggesting that this process do in terms of consulting with the D C O as to what those actually are. Because, you know, we can make an assumption in terms of what their needs are on the basis of what the broader community's needs are. But if there are specific things that um, needs, need to be addressed, that needs to be flushed out. So a process of consultation is absolutely necessary.
Okay.
I'm happy to move uh, councillor Ayed's uh, motion into mine.
You need, you want to adopt councillor Ayed's motion into your foreshadowed motion, councillor, is that what?
Yes, I think that's, that's a very good suggestion and I'm happy to go for it.
Um, well, if councillor um, Rhodes is happy to include that we liaise with the Department of Defence to to um, identify specific needs of defence families. And I'd like it to be included in the whole online orientation pack. So it wouldn't be specific to Department of Defence families. It would be a little more general, but it would be included in the orientation pack.
Can I just say for the information of councillors, if you're a partner in the defence forces and you have children, quite often your partner is called away without very much notice. And you can spend many weeks isolated with young families. And that is very different to a lot of folk in the normal community. And there are often health needs that can't be followed up because you have been dislocated from your health service providers because you've been in other states. It does go on and on and on and I do see them as, I'm not, don't normally talk from the chair, but I have had experience in this area in my work life and I can say that at one stage there was nobody actually in the welfare sector helping defence personnel. And the reality is there's a lot of um, educational needs too with children and defence families because of the dislocation of education, because they're moved so frequently. So there are quite a lot of legitimate differences. Um, and, and often that's out of the hands of the family because the partner's being moved around and you go where they go. So I just, for the sake of um, just putting those facts before you councillors. Now, we're moving on and we've got a motion here that actually talked, councillor Caliander and councillor Hagerty. Um, and then we have a motion as moved by councillor Rhodes and councillor Hall and councillor Rhodes is happy to take on board councillor Ayed's sentiments.
Yes, um, and Madam Mayor, in light of the comments that you made, maybe then we could, you know, provide a link on the orientation for defence families.
That'd be an excellent idea, councillor.
Right, Madam Mayor, can I just make a point?
Mm-hmm.
Um, in discussions with a lot of new residents in the local government area, um, I've found that a lot of people don't think to have a look on council's website, council's Facebook page, any of our, our social media networks before actually moving into the area. Um, I discovered an entire pocket of residents in Edmondson Park who'd never heard of our recent community forum and therefore did not have the opportunity to present their concerns at that community forum. So I think actually having something that is sent specifically to the, this group of um, of people that is moving into the area is quite necessary rather than just expecting them to, you know, think about the information that may or may not be on a website and therefore somehow end up coming across it and making use of it.
Yep.
Madam Mayor, can I ask to put the motion, the foreshadowed motion, please?
Yes, certainly. Um, what did you say councillor, did you, you're going to? Yep, 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 that's fine. We'll put the motions as they stand. I'm happy with seconded for that. Seconded. Thank you councillor Hagerty. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. It's been, the first motion that would be put is the motion as put by councillor Caliander and seconded by councillor Hagerty. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Those against? The motion is lost. The foreshadowed motion, okay, the foreshadowed motion. I think you've been told to sit down. It's getting to that time of night, but um, the, the following motion is moved by councillor, I'm sorry, councillor Rhodes and seconded by councillor Hall. There is only one. This is the one that's now going before you. Okay, I'll read it out. Develop an online orientation welcome pack for introduct- introductory information about services and amenities in the Liverpool L G A. Distribute such information to defence community in all new development areas through social networks. Welcome page, welcome page to service all new residents in our L G A network. Develop an online orientation in English with the top three most spoken languages in Liverpool, including a range of services to be, full stop. Um, five, to liaise with the Department of Defence to identify specific needs up to the defence. Thank you, families and have this included in the orientation packs with the link of orientation page, webpage to be provided to defence families. That is the motion. I'm going to put it. Those in favour? Those against, declare it carried. Okay, next item is in the name of councillor Rhodes.
I move a motion, Madam Mayor.
Councillor, what is your motion?
The motion is that council shall forthwith commence the implementation of a twelve month trial policy to prohibit smoking throughout the public areas of the Central Business District of Liverpool, including the following features. One, appropriate sign shall be erected. Two, the communications department be directed to implement an appropriate communication education campaign. Three, the licence agreements for marquises in the Macquarie Moor shall be progressively updated to introduce a clause requiring reasonable steps to ensure patrons do not smoke. And four, that council does not otherwise adopt an enforcement strategy through its ranges. And five, that council receives the report at the end of the twelve month period.
There'd be only one issue, I'd say, councillor, that where you've got the communications department be directed, you can only direct the C E O.
That the C E O direct the communications department?
That's fine. Okay. That's your share, that's right. Do you wish to speak to your motion, councillor?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. With the recent changes to the Liverpool C B D amendment that will double the number of residents living and working in the C B D, there has never been a better time to uh, and/or opportunity to encourage a safer, healthier, cleaner environment than now. To initiate a non-smoking environment throughout, through campaigns based on good humour and cooperation rather than prosecution or heavy penalties and fines would encourage a non-smoking environment rather than force a reluctant culturally smoking opinionated community to conform to a healthier environment against their wishes. Such campaigns engaged through West Rock and other such organisations would be considered. To introduce such reforms now would be easier than when the C B D is completely populated. It's reassuring to see the hospital front area now a smoke-free zone, acknowledging that despite this previously being an area heavily used by smokers. Um, it is not necessary for us to debate the harm of smoking, we're all aware of that. Nor the harm the non-smoking policy might have on some businesses in the C B D area. We are all aware of that. It is necessary for us as councillors to acknowledge all of these factors and encourage through education and the great pro- and the great programmes available that will lead us towards a non-smoking C B D and also address the communication implications of non-smoking. By making the C B D a smoke-free environment, we have no confusion about where you can and cannot smoke. This will make the one message more understood without confusion in a linguistically diverse population. They will simply understand they cannot smoke in public areas in the Liverpool C B D. Businesses that wish to include smoking in their businesses have a right to do so in line with other already existing laws about smoking inside premises. Already in the Liverpool C B D, there are multiple businesses who provide smoking areas within their premises. Clubs, pubs and restaurants already provide smoking zones that could be used. That will take people smoking off the streets in public areas of the C B D and deliver possibly more customers to the smoke-friendly businesses. Businesses in the C B D are already providing the smoking zones that we were finding difficulty in providing within our C B D. Taking smokers off the C B D streets will enable a cleaner, healthier, safer C B D. As businesses are already.
Sorry, point of order, Mayor, is the speaker saying that smokers are.
Sorry, point of order mayor, is the speaker saying that smokers are dirty?
No, not at all.
Okay, can you then withdraw that?
Uh.
Thank you.
Councillor, I rule on that, not you.
Oh, sorry.
I know you're chafing it a bit but councillor, I don't think your intention was to slur the smoking population, was it?
No, absolutely not.
Uh before you go, we've got a second of a councillor. Thank you councillor Hall, continue, thank you.
Um by giving people the who smoke the opportunity to smoke within the businesses that are already required by law to provide smoking zones, we are making the general district, the uh community parts of the environment within the C B D a healthier, cleaner, safer place. Um businesses who encourage smoking within their premises will not be disadvantaged by the passing of this motion for the whole of the C B D. In fact, if they provide smoking areas within their premises, we're encouraging customers for them by directing people who do smoke to their smoke-friendly businesses. By introducing no smoking through education and friendly social engagement campaigns, we are avoiding direct confrontation and leading a community to a healthier, smoking-free Liverpool C B D without the need of fines and heavy punishments.
Thank you councillor, you spoke to, hold on a minute, spoke to your motion. We've got new uh body who wishes to speak against the motion. Councillor Chidi, you have questions?
Uh just a question to the mover and the second of the motion, can you define the boundaries of the C B D please?
As per our council plans.
So are you saying that now based on that, and correct me if I'm incorrect, so in Speed Street, Nagel Street, Castle Ray Street, down towards the Hume Highway, you are now going to attempt to ban smoking, is that correct?
In all public areas.
Thank you councillor for answering the question, any opposition?
Yes mayor, I'll speak against this motion.
Thank you.
No surprise, I take it. At the end of the day, we do have a legal product that's out there and yes, it would be great that if nobody smokes but there are smokers out in the community. Councillor Rhodes says that there are already smoking areas in the C B D, pubs, clubs and whatnot. What happens if you don't drink and you can't go to the pubs and the clubs councillor? What happens to people like that? Is this policy now really, in a sense, and there's no discrimination act in relation to banning smoking, but are we now discriminating against people that want to smoke in the C B D? So we're talking C B D as the plans that you put it. If you're outside a unit block down at the end of Castle Ray Street on the Hume Highway, you can no longer smoke. If you're at the Warwick Farm at the end there, you can no longer smoke. If you're down at Speed Street, you can no longer smoke. Apologies, but it's absolutely ridiculous that this is even being considered. When you talk about public areas in the C B D, I think it's important to also then go for a walk because what I can do now with this and when we're talking about public areas, if you just look at Macquarie Street, at Bathurst Street, at George Street or whatever the case may be, and I'll use a example, I'll use the Commonwealth Bank in um Macquarie Street as an example. Their building line or their building is actually about 500 mil from their actual building line. So you telling me now that I have I can if I choose, want to and nobody can do anything about it, stand in front of the Commonwealth Bank, four metres away from the doorway, have a smoke and blow it all over the footpath and guess what? Nobody can do anything about it because that's actually private land, not public land. I can sit in the Macquarie Hotel and open the windows and blow the smoke out into onto the footpath because that's private but their balcony is out onto the footpath. There are many instances and examples where this can happen. Seriously councillors, and I did go and consult, as we say, via uh social media in relation to this. And you know what the feedback was from my consultation, not council's one, council did their own. There were some beauties, I tell you, I won't mention them all but there were some beauties and and most of them related to councillor, how about you look at your current smoking zones and enforce those first or educate those people around those zones first before you go out and roll this out across the C B D. You currently have no smoking areas in the C B D, around the bus stops for example, you're not supposed to smoke and the one on Moore Street next to the newsagent has a big sign there that says no smoking and yes, there are cigarette butts all over the ground. There are people there smoking. There are a lot of instances around the C B D where it says no smoking and people are smoking. So how about we look at those areas if you want to do a trial and to ensure that this works? How about we focus first on the actual areas of non-smoking? So big park where there's playground equipment for the children, people shouldn't be smoking. Um where the bus stops are, people shouldn't be smoking. In the mall where the people are eating, people shouldn't be smoking. If we're serious about getting this right, and I am supportive of getting this right, how about we just focus initially on the current no smoking areas and let's see how that works? If you want to trial something, trial it with that. That way you can get good feedback from all involved in relation to how can we if we choose to put forward a policy to ban smoking. Other people are saying, seriously, is this the biggest issue the council's got? You can go in there, you can buy cigarettes and obviously the federal government gets the taxes from the cigarettes, um but you can't smoke it all of a sudden. You've got shop owners saying, I'm paying $12,000 a month in rent and I rely on people sitting outside having a coffee and smoking, that's how I turn over my business. And yes, there could be a case that more people would go there and probably eat food. There could be a case for that, uh hasn't been tested. But one classic example was today in the mall that I went for a walk through. The R S L club has its outdoor area and it has a non-smoking area. Guess what? How many people were sitting in the non-smoking area in the mall? In their own little area which is non-smoking? Zero. How many people were in the canopy next door and the one after and the one after and the one after it? They were pretty much all full. Chess players in the mall that sit there, the the men and some women that gather there to play chess. What are they doing? They're playing their chess and they're doing it.
Five seconds councillor.
I'm sure councillor, given that it's an important issue, I'll just move a foreshadowed motion and I'll keep talking there. Um so can I have an extension or is that possible or do you want me to move a foreshadowed for the sake of it?
You need to do a foreshadowed councillor because it is, there's no extension with the councillor.
All right, can I foreshadow a motion mayor then? The ca- the council? And I think there is because previously it has happened but anyway. Can we just go up to councillor? All I wanted some wording for councillor to go out there and imply this thing to the current no smoking zones in the Liverpool C B D.
Well, uh was that your motion?
Yeah, something on that.
All right, um I'll ask a question to give you some thinking time.
Thanks.
Um the previous motion of councillor that came up four, four, five months ago, um that had some actions there for councillor to come back at some point with some information, if I recall correctly. Uh can I see some nodding? Okay, when was that, when is that due to come back? When is, when is that report due to come back? Don't give me the shrug, give me this definite timeframe.
Uh there wasn't a timeframe on it in the resolution councillor. Um however, it was needed to be referred back to the next C B D committee and my understanding is that a meeting has not yet been held, is that correct, Mr Moore? Yep.
I would like to speak against the motion. Against the uh motion by, not councillor Hachidi's motion, the motion moved by councillor So um I look, it's pretty obvious that we've got some very passionate views on both sides of this debate, uh as witnessed by the comments on councillor Hachidi's Facebook page. Um my views on this particular motion have changed and you know, it's not until, not until about probably five minutes ago that I made my mind up on what I was going to do. In the previous motions and the previous discussions around uh this motion, um what we realised through surveys and engagement and speaking to residents was that we needed to take them on a journey, we needed to phase it in, we needed to do an education plea piece, uh and we also needed to have areas where they could smoke and where they couldn't smoke. Um unfortunately, this motion essentially blows all that up and tips the table over. Uh it's too absolute, it's too overarching, um and and for that reason I can't support it. I don't smoke, I realise there are people that smoke and I know that it's not uh illegal. It's legal to smoke. So until they ban smoking, I guess this will always be a difficult decision. Uh my dad was a smoker for most of his life. Uh he doesn't smoke anymore but twice in the last month I've actually had to go and get him from Liverpool Hospital. He had breathing troubles, had to go to Liverpool uh Hospital and uh make sure he was all right. He was there for a couple of days and he was discharged. I know what the effect, like I personally firsthand know the effects of smoking, it's terrible, uh it's very unhealthy and people that do smoke should probably consider the situation my dad's in. He stopped smoking about uh five or six years ago, that doesn't help his situation. Considering all of that, um you know, I still can't support this motion. What I can support is a motion that does the things I mentioned earlier. It takes people on a journey, phases it in, does some education, has designated areas where people can smoke, where people can't smoke. Um and I was hoping at some point that that previous councillor, that previous motion of councillor would bring back a report or bring something that had done some some due diligence, some research, some engagement with the community and said, we spoke to the community, we spoke to people on both sides and here's a reasonable compromise that strikes the right balance, uh designate certain areas as non-smoking, designate certain areas as smoking, uh and we then take the community on a journey. We we have a six to 12 month phasing period, we then have a 12 month trial, uh we gather data and then when it comes back we say, excellent, it's working or it's not working or we need to tweak it here. This motion doesn't do that. Uh it basically goes from, you know, the moment we vote, we we ban smoking and we ban it all over the the C B D. Councillor Hachidi made a pretty good point, you know, down the back end, uh where all the apartments are, effectively that makes it illegal smoking down there. Um and yeah, I just don't think this is very well thought through, it's too absolute, it's too overarching and unfortunately I I have to vote against it.
Mayor, just to clarify.
Thank you councillor.
The foreshadowed.
Councillor Chidi.
Um bum bum bum, yep, that's fine. Can I just understand point four of the previous motion that says, don't enforce it, don't book people, is that?
That's right.
All right, can you include that as a point two in that? And then then number five becomes a point three? Just so that then we've got a motion. Yep, thanks. And then that way there's a motion.
Have we got a second of a councillor Chidi's motion?
Yes.
Thank you councillor.
Madam mayor, I just have a question. I just want to note, throughout the the malls, more specifically, are, is there any um non-smoking signs erected currently like around the kids' play area or anything like that?
Uh I would have to take that on notice and go for a walk in the mall but I think there are. Um can anyone, can anyone, we'd have to check, sorry, yeah.
Councillor's long-term policy is that there be no smoking in children's play areas on council property.
Yeah. Okay, well, if councillor Hachidi and councillor Haddad are happy to include it in their motion, that maybe we could have non-smoking signs erected around children's players, areas designated just for young children and basically all playgrounds. So I don't know what the radius would be, I mean, would it be 10 metres, 20 metres? Would it be just on the border?
Certainly councillor, I believe there actually is a specified radius, there certainly is one for government buildings because I remember when we had to introduce the signage is, so we can certainly follow what the recommendations.
So maybe we could apply that one to playgrounds in Liverpool C B D, Liverpool City Council area, thank you.
Um councillors, historically, we actually moved a motion in the 90s that be no smoking in council um play areas where children play and also sporting ovals as well.
Madam mayor, I'm not so sure I've ever seen.
I know, I'm telling you.
A sign up.
No, there is some.
Things happen in history, they get often forgotten but there is a resolution and it's from the 90s. I know, I seconded it. Anyway, moving on.
Just a request slash question. Uh point three of councillor Hachidi's motion, just around the report, can we get some specifics around that report? What is that report going to report on?
What 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 I'd like to see in 12 months' time is um how we've managed it, what's happened, what the response is um from the Rangers. I mean, obviously our Rangers are in the field all the time, um just to get some general feedback in relation to how they found it. Are people willing to? Are they finding people being um on the defensive when they go up to them and want to talk to them about uh the non-smoking? I think it's important that we protect our Rangers also, we've seen an incident only recently in relation to that, uh or a number of incidents um recently. Um just want to get some general feedback from them and I suppose then the community as well as to, okay, how's this all gone? Is it going to work? And I think the call from the community at large is really focus on the current non-smoking um and, you know, then then look at expanding it.
Councillor, may I just seek a little clarification? I think what you're also seeking there is is an education campaign rather than an enforcement campaign. It would be useful to have that included in the um resolution because I I possibly would run an education campaign not through the Rangers but through the waste, potentially the wasted education officers.
And I'm happy to remove anything that says enforcement in there because it gives people the um the the wrong idea of what we're trying to achieve. But I just want to make it clear that, yes, we're not going to, you know, put out really our Rangers at risk and try to book them. Um it's an education programme so.
The three cousins in the.
Yep. So can we get rid of two?
I I I think it may as well leave that, it gives me direction as to what councillor wants.
Through the chair, just with the foreshadowed for number five, could we have it rather than just um Liverpool C B D, could we have it the whole Liverpool district or the whole Liverpool region, council area?
Smoking is banned in in children's play areas so it's just a matter of rolling out a signage and an education campaign.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Madam mayor, just in terms of um the information that we get at the end of the 12 month period, um is it worth actually getting some metrics in terms of, I mean, if the end goal of this is to try and reduce rates of smoking and improve health outcomes, um to actually try and get some of those, some of that information as well as to whether this has had an impact on those issues?
Madam mayor.
Yes councillor.
I haven't spoken on this and I think I should be speaking in favour of the first motion.
You can speak in favour of the first.
And or speak against the amendment, either way. Against the amendment and for the first motion. The argument has been put forward that at the moment we have a areas that are no smoking and we have areas that are smoking. The problem is, it can, it causes confusion. Nobody really knows what, where where they can smoke other than in private, in business establishments and private establishments but on the street, we have areas that are no smoking and we have some areas that are smoking. I've just come back from Tokyo and that would probably be the cleanest place I've ever come to. There are no cigarette butts anywhere and yes, I do agree, some people are not clean, they throw the cigarette butts on the ground as we saw over there and they were fairly quickly removed. In our no smoking areas, we constantly find lots of cigarette butts simply because it's convenient for people to drop them and and extinguish them there and there. If we have no smoking in the C B D at all, there is no confusion. Everybody knows that you cannot smoke in a public area and it doesn't matter where you're in front of a set of flats or units or wherever you are, if it's public, you cannot smoke there. I would think that is a much simpler way than the confusion that we're going to cause by having no smoking areas and sanctioned smoking areas as you already have in the mall. In the mall, there are some areas there that are deemed no smoking, yet people smoke there anyway. You find cigarette butts all over the place. So in my humble opinion, I believe we should make the whole of the C B D no smoking and let the private establishments and the business establishments do what they want to do without due interference from us. I think the amended foreshadowed motion is going to cause us more problems, it's not going to solve anything, we are still going to be faced with the same problem. And if we take the example of North Sydney, they have done what we have said we should do. I believe North Sydney has a clean area, they have no smoking in public places, they have enforced the system without fining anybody initially and I I suppose eventually they will. But initially, everybody knows if we have a no smoking C B D, people know that. But initially, everybody knows if we have a no smoking CBD, people know that's what it means. Then if they do smoke, they need to be cautioned or whatever means you wish to implement to eventually educate people that they cannot do that in a public place. It's offensive for me to have to intake somebody else's exhale smoke. Or for that matter, the cigarette ash, they conveniently spread into the air that gets into my nostrils or on my clothes or whatever else. I think the fact that people are able to smoke within your vicinity is discrimination against me. The fact that they can do it, I think it's wrong. It has nothing to do with alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hall. Now, he has spoken against the amendment and for the motion. The mover has spoken for the motion. The mover of the amendment has spoken for his motion. Anybody wish to, you're an opposing.
Do I have a right of reply?
Yes, thank you councillor.
Okay, look, I've taken a few notes from the people who spoke for the foreshadow motion. And to councillor Hagerty, we not doing this all of a sudden, we're giving it a 12 month trial. It is not something that we're just plonking on the community.
Point of order, mayor.
Yes councillor, what's your point of order?
That's factually incorrect. It is all of a sudden. We're talking about the whole CBD from the Hymne Highway to past Nagel Street. So it is all of a sudden. We haven't consulted with the community, so that's factually.
Councillor Hachidi, I haven't got to you.
Hold on a minute councillor.
Hopefully you won't.
When there's a point of order called, you actually remain silent until the ruling is made.
My apologies.
Thank you. I will uphold your point of order councillor because this motion has appeared in the business paper without any linkage to the previous motion or a workshop or anything or a strategic panel. So I will uphold your point of order.
Madam mayor, what I was referring to was councillor Hachidi's reference that this is too sudden, that this is something that we need to do more gradually, which is what their foreshadow motion implies. But this is a 12 month trial period.
Point of order, mayor. My motion doesn't imply that. Can she withdraw, please?
Excuse me, your point of order is?
She's saying that gradually and implying and what I want to do, it's not what I want to do. It's what I want to do is in front of councillor Rhodes.
I'm not going to uphold that one councillor. Keep going councillor Rhodes.
So what I am talking about is what councillor Hagerty was saying in support of your motion and I'm trying to address those issues. What I am saying, that this is not a sudden, full stop, here it is. This is a very gentle approach. Though we've got a 12 month trial period, we've clearly defined what the law is, which is very, and what we're trying to do. This is very important, particularly in a linguistic diverse community. It's got to be a clear thing. Okay, you can't smoke in public areas in the CBD. It's clear. It's decisive. It can be easily understood. But we're giving you a very easy transition into it. There will be no heavy fines, there will be no persecution. What there will be is gentle education and gentle persuasion. In answer to your question that we're not providing smoking areas, councillor, we are providing smoking areas simply by using the law itself. There are smoking areas in business establishments. Now councillor Hachidi, we cannot control people. There will always be some people who choose to do the wrong thing. There will always be some people who choose to do the right thing. About the smoking in illegal areas, all we can say is that you cannot smoke in the public areas of the CBD. Not defined to this area or that area that is going to confuse people that you will not be able to enforce or encourage or even explain. People who do not drink, you said, are being left with no place to go for a smoking area. Nothing could be further than the truth. We have numerous cafes who are crying out for customers who like to smoke. And I'm sure that they're going to endorse this motion because of that. They will welcome those people. It will increase their business. Multiple cafes, multiple cafes in Liverpool who provide that. I'm sure they will welcome the people who do not drink into smoking areas in cafes in the Liverpool area. So I disagree that those people who cannot smoke, that do not drink will have nowhere to go. I think that this is a sensible, practical motion. It addresses all the issues. We were really worried about the commercial impacts upon businesses who obviously have a culture that enjoys smoking. We're endorsing that. We're saying, fine, you continue with your businesses. In fact, we encourage you to continue with your businesses, just within the law. They will be our smoking areas in the Liverpool CBD. This is new and I grant that it might take a little bit of effort for some councillors to get their head around it. But it will work. Or if it doesn't work, we'll know in 12 months and no harm is done.
Yes councillor, point of order.
Just the comment around, take a while for councillors to get their head around. I'm interpreting that as a comment on the intelligence level of councillors and as such, I take offence.
I'm not going to uphold your point of order councillor. I think it was said in the general terms and nobody was actually pointed out in that particular saying. Councillor, you have 30 seconds left.
It is because of the necessity for us to provide a healthy, safe environment for all of our citizens that we must address all the issues. We must provide a place where it is safe for people to go that are not going to be inhaling secondhand smoke. We are doing something that is good for the health of the community. If we pass this motion, if we persevere with it for 12 months, then get a report back to council. If it doesn't work, then we will look at your other suggestions. I really believe that all.
Point of order, mayor, time's up.
Councillor.
Well, madam mayor, can I ask to put the motion defer?
No, can I, you've got a right here, haven't I?
No, I'm afraid you don't have to write a reply on a foreshadowed.
Can I ask some questions, mayor?
No, we've had enough.
Please, just one.
No. No.
And it's related to an issue?
No. Those in favour of the motion as originally moved by councillor Hall, sorry councillor Rhodes and seconded by councillor Hall, please raise your hands. Those against, the motion is lost. The foreshadowed motion, too late councillor, the foreshadowed motion.
Do I get a right reply now?
Now, the foreshadowed motion is now put before you. Those in favour, please raise your hands. It has been carried. Thank you.
Can I get a reply now to my?
No.
Can I ask a question? You're not being fair, mayor.
Fire and Rescue New South Wales referrals?
Yeah, I've got, oh, should we go on a closed? I suppose, and please stop me any time you want, so I don't get into.
Trouble?
Yes. It surprised me if it's an issue and it surprised me that this report is here for two things. Firstly, we can't direct staff to do anything. There's policies in place and you should be following. Policy is my understanding. Secondly, if it's that much of an issue, why don't Fire and Rescue do something instead of? To me, I don't see any issues here because they've gone out, they've inspected and they've said, well, council up to you, you can do whatever you want. If it was really an issue, they would have done something. And secondly, can we now tell you not to follow policy and procedure because that's what you're asking us here?
Do you want to answer?
Yeah, Mr Moore, thank you.
Through CEO, there are specific provisions in the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act. If you look on four, six, four, the fourth paragraph down in the background refers to those provisions. I queried this myself. And it quite specifically says, when Fire and Rescue have carried out an assessment of buildings and they've determined that there are standards, fire safety standards that aren't being met in a building and they've informed council of that, that that matter must be tabled before a meeting of council. And then the council must determine the appropriate actions to take. The council's the appropriate enforcement body for these matters rather than Fire and Rescue. So they've made us aware of what the issues are. We're doing what we have to do under the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act and we're putting to a recommendation on how we think we should proceed. Although the precise details to be included in any order haven't been determined yet. They'll be based on the fire safety matters that Fire and Rescue have raised with us.
Thank you. Someone like to move a motion?
I have a question, madam mayor.
Yes councillor Caliander?
I know that the letter from Fire and Rescue requests that council sort of inspect and address any other deficiencies on the premises identified. Will that also affect what we're agreeing to here in terms of the measures that are required to fix what they've identified?
Mr Moore?
Through CEO, no, they won't. I mean, we haven't specifically itemised for you what all of those measures are. We're referring you to what Fire and Rescue have advised us of. But as I say, the specifics for the order haven't been determined yet. So I think in short, the answer to your question is no.
Okay, we have a mover please?
Can I move that we just defer this to you guys? Because, sorry, this is 31st of August 2018. If we're really talking about a major issue here, you know, it's two months later.
So delegate to the CEO?
For any future, for the actioning of any future fire safety orders?
I mean, at the end of the day, if it's really that important.
So.
Oh, okay. So it's a legal requirement?
So it can't be delegated, it can't be delegated to the CEO. It needs to come towards council for resolution. Yep.
Okay.
Just, this isn't related to cladding, is it?
No, this is a, this is a separate matter.
So given that legally we have to decide it and it's been put before us by the staff in court.
Move that way.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Quick question?
Yes?
In relation to council premises, are all ours up to speed with fire safety audits? For example, all our underground car parks, we have sprinkler systems in there, fire hydrants at next to locations. Are all our properties certified tick for fire safety?
No, there are currently some outstanding properties, but we are aware of what is outstanding and what needs to be done and are working towards it.
All right, so then as a councillor, can I move that you don't enforce on anyone that doesn't have their fire safety standards up to speed until council gets its act together? Sorry, until council complies with its own orders.
I understand the intent of that councillor and I'm certainly not over the moon myself that we're not up to speed. However, I think that would be counterproductive to what Fire and Rescue New South Wales are asking us to do. Mr Moore, is there anything to add there?
Through CEO, only one additional thing. In relation, these are buildings that, before you hear in this report, that Fire and Rescue have specifically come to us about. The buildings that the CEO is referring to are just buildings where there is an annual fire safety statement that may not have been completed yet.
All right, so in relation to this, and again, don't want to go too much into this. I can't see how us as a council can go out to other buildings and try to enforce when they do our statements and buildings and make sure people put in, for example, sprinkler system, retrofit one. Where does our, for example, this building here, underground, does it have a fire sprinkler system in the car park? That's up to the current standard. That building right across the road, three levels or four levels of basement, does it have a fire sprinkler system?
33 Mall Street is one of the buildings that I do need to look at councillor. I don't disagree with what you're saying and I understand the intent. However, I just want to come back to these are Fire and Rescue New South Wales referrals to us. I do understand what you're saying and I understand the contradiction there. However, these have not been triggered or initiated by action of council. They've come to us by Fire and Rescue New South Wales.
But, sorry councillor, just one more. But the other premises that we go out there and knock on their doors, and I totally understand council officers need to do their job. How can we in good conscience go out to everybody else and say, you must put in a half a million dollar, for example, fire sprinkler system or put a hydrant out the front now because the BCA says you need to do this or try to enforce this or try to do that, when our own properties that we're enforcing the law on don't meet the same standard?
Councillor, I think, and I'm not attempting to defend the fact that we haven't completed the work we need to do. I totally acknowledge that and I accept that. However, I do think there is regardless a responsibility of council to enforce fire safety in the LGA. Take on board that council itself has not been as good as we should be in this area. However, I do think we do have a regulatory and moral responsibility to continue to ensure fire safety and to continue enforcement action as usual.
I have a question.
Can I speak to my motion?
Can I finish? Please?
One more question councillor?
Given that we know about our own building and the enforcement team should be separate to everybody else, which they are, has our enforcement team served and noticed on council in relation to our buildings?
I don't, I don't believe so, but.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Hagerty?
I'd like to speak to the motion.
Yes, go ahead.
I take on board councillor Hachidi's point. The difference being is that we are aware of it and we're doing what we can. And, you know, while we haven't done all the outstanding work, I'm sure every year we put some budget aside to do some work. The other point I'll make in regards to councillor Hachidi's point was that we shouldn't, we shouldn't tell other people what to do if we haven't got our house in order. If I take that analogy to its logical conclusion, the police shouldn't be arresting anyone if there is a police officer that breaks the law. Yes, that's the same, that's the same point.
He's allowed to be heard unheeded councillor Tidie, so please be quiet.
I have a question, madam.
Councillor Caliander?
Thank you, madam mayor. So I would like to clarify, if that recommendation motion was taken on board and council did not sort of fulfil its, I'm assuming its statutory responsibilities, would we, and there was a critical incident at any of these sites, would we then be legally liable for that?
I'd have to seek some, potentially, but I'd have to seek some legal advice on that matter.
Okay councillors, I'm conscious of the time and people have been very patient. Anybody wish to speak further on this motion? I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, carried. Next item is Legal Affairs Report on page 476.
Is this in closed session?
No, maybe you ask your questions in closed session, so.
You want to have this moved into closed session, you probably need to do it now because that's the next item.
But you can ask your questions in closed session with the other item. We're just noting.
This is.
No, we moved the.
We're not in closed session as yet councillor.
I move that we go into closed session, madam mayor, just to be safe.
You want this item moved into the closed?
And discussed with the other.
Seconded, who wants to move it? Thank you councillor Hall, I put it, those in favour, those against, carried. The next item is closed session, so at this point, item corp five, com three and com two, a commercial in confidence and meet the requirements of the act. So the meeting will be now closed into a private session. Thank you. If everybody could please leave. Thank you. If everybody could please leave.
It's a goddamn right, really. Actually against the law now.
No, no.
I can't read all this out. I'm not reading all this out.
Oh, don't worry about it.
That was hard work.
We don't have... You were just going to say...
I don't want to say anything.
You're hearing this, mate. You'd like to set off the party.
In closed session, the council noted the report of staff. Council accepted the legal affairs report and also gave the staff delegation to proceed with the civic place. There you go, meeting closed.